This is a special Wapaka City Council meeting.
Welcome, everybody, to tonight's Committee of the Whole meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 13th, 2015, and it is a little past time, 5:44 PM. I call this Committee of the Whole meeting to order. You have in attendance as far as... Are we taking minutes?
Yes.
Okay. In attendance, just to make it easier, the only council person that is not here tonight is Alan Keeland. The other nine members are here, as well as Mayor Smith. We have an agenda, and actually you have an agenda and a sub-agenda. If you look on your first page, you have the actual agenda of the Committee of the Whole, and then if you look after Henry's memo, you can see that we also have an agenda for the actual budget workshop, which is more detailed. So, I would entertain a motion to approve both those agendas at this time.
So moved.
Second?
A motion by Hackett, second by Dave Peterson, that we approve the agendas as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carry. Andrea, I'm gonna turn it over to you then.
Okay. Great. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We're running a little bit late today. This feels different, looks different, and a little bit of this is by design. We wanted to create an opportunity for more discussion around new initiatives or changes in our budget, and we purposely tried to keep the paperwork from the front end so, you know, we could just focus on things at this meeting. And again, we got a little bit behind. I apologize for that. But we wanted to do, as you see here, we wanted to get to our outside agencies, then go to our different departments and have a discussion on their budget proposals, take a break, and then get into the utility budgets, and then talk a little bit about the next steps. Today is totally a workshop for the new aldermen. This is an opportunity just to talk and discuss the budget. There'd be no formal action on anything today. It's just a discussion. Hopefully, we leave you with lots to think about. We've got a pretty full agenda, but I hope we can get us out of here in two and a half, three hours, I suppose. So, I don't know, Kathy, did you want to add anything to the...
Well, what I've given you is pretty much a budget worksheet that gives you two years of previous actuals, so that you can do some trending or comparisons as far as expenditures and revenues are. And that's pretty much what I use in determining where the revenues should be, is the trendings. The other thing is, there's the July 31st year-to-date actual, because that's when I pulled the worksheets for the departments, and then a 1231 estimated year-to-date that was either filled out by the departments, or if they weren't filled out, I just put in the current year's budget to bring them up to date, so that we have an estimate as to where we think we might end the year up with. And then the 2015 current budget, and then the request of the departments. Now, I haven't touched, and neither has Henry, touched any of the requests from the departments. So whatever they submitted to me, you are seeing. So, the only things I would have added if they didn't was the salaries and benefits. Other than the Police Department being adjusted for contractual wage increases, everything else was state status quo. There are no wage increases built into the 2016 budget for general employees. That's one of the items that we felt would be a good discussion point for the council to make, whether or not there should be an increase or not, based on what the bottom line is. And so I think you'll see in the handouts that you'll see the revenues. I've summarized some departments, like DPW, and Police, and Park and Rec, and Library, so that you can see at a bird's-eye view of the department, and if you really want to get into the detailed line items, they're behind the summaries. And the same thing goes with the revenues for the general fund and expenditures. There's two line items that I did not include, was the Fire Department and the recycling charge from the county. So, there'll be an adjustment when we get to those things. But right off the top, that's where we would stand with the general fund. You also have this online fund, the utility fund, the water utility fund, the library, which is now a new fund. We are pulling out the library to make room for expenditure restraint and to be able to provide a levy contribution to the library based on council actions. So you have libraries request of what they want for a tax levy in this budget, and we take the lead. That is all I have right now.
Yeah, I think once we get past the outside agencies, there's a few general kind of global things that we wanted to kind of make you aware of, where, you know, some state shared revenue sits and some issues and some things like that. I can provide that after the outside agencies. So I think...
Yeah, I have a few comments too, but I think I'll wait till after the outside agencies too. They've been here a little longer than what we probably expected already. So, we have an order there. Why don't we start with... Do we have somebody here from the Wapaka Historical Society? You want to start for us? I'm sorry, I can't hear your name. Bob?
Bob Kessler.
Yeah, Bob, if you want to... Can you come up here in front?
Where would you like me?
Just in front, so everybody can face you instead of having to turn around and see the face. There's no...
I'll make it easy. I'll just break back here. I'll go back to the office.
That's fine. No, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm Bob Kessler. I'm the treasurer of the Wapaka Historical Society, and also with me is Dennis Lear, our president. Dennis, stand up! At this time, I'll first start out by wanting to thank the council, the city, for all their past support. Actually, to say that, it would be somewhat very difficult, or probably could not operate without your financial support. I believe all of you have a copy of the budget that we submitted, and the financial figures are based upon our past financial experience, past maybe three, four, or five years, and the dollar amount that we're asking for is the same dollar amount we've asked for, I think, for the last three or four years. And actually, the budget, of course, is based upon the actual dollar amount that we really need to do our basic operation. The purpose, really, of the Wapaka Historical Society is really to educate, preserve, advance, and disseminate the knowledge of the history of the Wapaka area. And we do this one way by, really, we have four historic buildings, and of course, one is the Holly History and Genealogy Center, which is the old library. We have Hutchinson House, King Cottage, and the Depot. And go on to say that history really seems to be very important to the individuals really making, which makes this organization important and a very valuable asset to the city of Wapaka. Basically, I base it a little bit on that. We had over 1,600 visitors this past year. A little breakdown on that. The Holly Center had 337 visitors, and out of that 337, 262 were out of town, and of that, 34 were from out of state, representing 15 states. And we had 75 Wapaka residents. Hutchinson House had 658 visitors, and out of that number, 454 were out of town, 72 of that were out of state, representing 13 states. And we also had two from Brazil and two from Taiwan. Along with that, we had 109 fourth graders visiting us and getting a little local history lesson of the Wapaka area. The Depot had 613 visitors, and I don't have the breakdown as to the numbers from out of state, local, and so forth. Now, as we mentioned, this number of visitors of the Holly Center, Hutchinson House, we actually had a total of 170 Wapaka residents that visited both of Hutchinson House and the Holly Center, and of course, I don't know out of that 613 how many were Wapaka residents. And these individuals come to us for the research, the history of this area, of course, representative chain, the city and the surrounding area, and also a fair amount of family research. And then that brings me to another organization, the Wapaka Area Genealogy Society, which is known as WAGS. And they are in the Holly Center, operate that on Saturday mornings from about 9:00 to 12:00. They have their monthly meetings. They have special programs. They have publications. Dennis, you want to hold up two or three of those publications, nice big things that they have there? I know one's got the basic history of the Wapaka going way back, and the other, I believe, has to do with service areas, doesn't it? Are the servicemen of the different branches of the service, I don't recall. So anyway, and also, back in 2009, they developed a Pioneer Certificate Program. And as many of you know, that this year's recipient was our mayor, Brian Smith, and congratulations for that. So again, as I mentioned all this, I'm just pointing, I'm trying to point out how important that this organization, the Wapaka Historical Society, is to the city, the surrounding area, and hopefully that, with that in mind, if this is a very valuable asset, represent that we do bring in many individuals from around the area, now to town, out of state, and it's very important to the local residents. So I hope that you will continue our financial support for that dollar amount that we have presented in the budget. So with that, I thank you very much for the opportunity to come before you and give you this information.
Thank you, Bob. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Bob? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll let you know.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to the Gold Cross Ambulance Service. I know Marcus here tonight. We'll have him make his presentation. Thanks for coming, Marcus.
Good evening, Mayor, and thanks for allowing me to come in front of you guys today. Does everybody have a piece of paper that has 1189 per capita on it? That's the one I'm gonna go over with you.
Is it in our packet?
It should be.
Okay.
I'm happy to report that what I'm presenting today is just under a 5% reduction from last year. One of the things that I'll just run downs, you know, we budgeted in 2016 $3,151,700 in revenue, gross ambulance revenue. Revenue allowance of 50%. I can tell you, we booked 49 and a half this year. We're booking 50% next year, and that holds true as well at Appleton. So, we hope to keep that at 50% and not have that go up. Net ambulance revenue, $1,575,850. Needs a subsidy requirement, $403,440. When you add the ambulance, net ambulance and subsidy together, you get $1.979 million. Expenses, $1.9 million. Leaves us a net income of $79,290. I always target a 4% margin so that we can reinvest back into the organization, and what that leaves is a per capita rate of 1189. If you look below, you will see who's all participants in this consortium. There are 17 municipalities that make up ambulances that range from London, Waigah, and Wapaka. And the next page that I gave you, same numbers, but it's $11 per capita, and the reason it's $11 there is we have been working with the Village of Hortonville and the Village of Dale to join the consortium and pay a subsidy towards the service. They are closest to the ambulance service, and I do believe that that is going to take place. Now, they have not voted on this as of yet, so the reason that it's 1189, I wanted to give you a number that absolutely will stand for sure, but if they join the consortium, it will actually be $11. To give you a little history, year-to-date, I ran numbers from January 1 through the end of September. We had 484 calls in your city. We have an average response time emergency of 5 minutes and 46 seconds. The average non-emergency response is 7 minutes and 21 seconds. 94 and a half percent of the time fractile, we are on scene in 10 minutes or less in the city. We did have 15 responses that ranged from 10 minutes and beyond, from 10 to 15 minutes. We had 10 responses that fell into that category, and we had five that fell in over 15 minutes. Now, I can tell you, I talked a little bit with Henry on this, we do have, there's a situation in the region where somebody is using the ambulance sometimes four, or five, and six times a day. They use the 911 system for that, and of course, by law, statutorily, we have to respond. So, that did create a few of those long response times when you tie up your resources in that fashion. So we are working with social service. We're working with police departments. We're working with, I think, the appropriate people to get that individual the help they need, but it has been, it can be a strain on the system. Couple other things. We did some STEMI work. We started the STEMI work in 2014, and what that is, door-to-balance time, if you're having a heart attack, and we recognize that as a paramedic coming into your door. 2014, it was 88 minutes. I'm happy to say in 2015, it's 75 minutes. Now, the national standard is 90 minutes or less for the time you're having a major heart attack, to have a door-to-balance time, so we're doing really good work there. We were recognized this year, Gold Cross, the AHA Gold Standard Award for the STEMI work we do, and we were the only service in the state of Wisconsin to be recognized for the Pediatric Champion Award, which is what we do for pediatric care. So with that, I would open it up to any questions.
Mark, do you want to just touch on the... You had another sheet in there too, which was talking about a second unit.
Yes.
Just touch on that.
Okay. One of the things, Henry had asked if I would put together something if we added an additional resource in the system, and that would take the subsidy per capita rate to $24.92. So if we added an additional ambulance into the system, it would be $24.92, and that would have all of those townships and municipalities that are, belong to the consortium would have to agree to that, if that's what they felt was necessary. I can give you a little history on your response times for 2014. I did bring that along. 2014, we had 442 responses. Our emergency response time was 5 minutes and 9 seconds. So you're looking at a 36-second difference from this year to last year. We also had one call. We had seven calls over 10 minutes and one call over 16. So even when you have even additional resources in your system, you're gonna have issues when you have multiple calls coming in, you know? And the problem with this business is you never know how many calls you're gonna get at the same time, and that's where it can be somewhat problematic. But I can assure you, and I can tell you this, that as our vehicles in this system get busy, we are moving vehicles from the valley even out here. So, you know, you're getting a lot of resources, you know, within the system. There will be times that we have extended response times. There are times that we use neutral aid. That will happen. I can assure you, I look at every one of those runs, when those runs come in, and for what I'm looking at with your 2015 response times of 5 minutes and 46 seconds, I think that's pretty good, and that does compare to other municipalities as well.
Thank you. Anybody else have some questions or comments? Can we anticipate any more communities maybe moving into our district?
Well, you know, it goes to show you, when you look at that, the more that participate, the lower, you know, that gets. So, you know, knowing that Hortonville and Dale are definitely within London reach, you know, of that ambulance, you know, I don't know the answer to that, but certainly I can tell you that what we're looking at forecasting out the next five years, you will see smaller ambulance services in regions having a hard time. I mean, this is, when you start looking at a revenue allowance of 50, you know, 50%, that's a lot. And so, we'll see, but the door's always open. Let's say that.
Any comments? Again, asking... Well, Mark, thank you. We do appreciate that you were able to bring it in at a lesser amount than what we had at the year before. I did think it was important that we take a look at what our cost would be for a second ambulance, although I did take the opportunity to go to their main hub and see how they operate and how they move ambulances around, so that you almost feel like you have two ambulances at most times. As you said, there was a couple, there's some incidences that are going on right now that hopefully can be taken care of, but you can see by adding a second unit, it does get cost prohibitive, and I think if you felt that we needed a second unit, you would be recommending that anyway.
I would absolutely recommend.
Well, thank you for coming, and I'm sure Henry or Kathy will be getting in contact with you very soon on this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good evening.
Henry, are you gonna take care of the recycling, or do you want me to?
Well, I can do, if I'm in whatever you'd like. It's a pretty simple situation. Last year, the county, because of lost recycling revenue from the state, wanted to... Oh, I'm sorry. I was gonna look at it.
It's in the library.
Okay. So we have one up there on the... And they were looking at a pretty significant increase to municipalities, and this would have been the first time we would have gotten an assessment from the county. And there was a little pushback, given the timing that they unveiled it, and so we kind of agreed that we'd work on it this year and then, you know, come to some discussions, decision on it for our 2016 budget. And that's what you see in front of you, and I can't give you all the gory details. All my... Well done. I can't support anymore, but they reduce this fairly significantly, these assessments. Initially, they were about double, but they were able, through some ways how they accounted for cost at the Manawha site, that they were able to reduce the assessments. Now, basically, this is almost a dollar-for-dollar assessment. This is $14,000 to the city. Yeah, and basically, this is going to replace what we were paying our local recycling commission. They were able to use some reserves. We found that there was some one-time money, I think that came in, Mayor, something to help the budget, and so basically, we're swapping out, paying an assessment that would have gone to our local recycling commission. This year, it's gonna go to the county. So I would just say it's a wash, and next year, we anticipate, well, we never know, but the recycling grants are supposed to go back up to 2014 levels next year. So how that impacts the county's assessment, we'll know next year, and then, you know, the local recycling commission will have to deal with their budgets as well. So I think they feel very comfortable that they have a healthy fund balance, probably can't dip into it too much in the future, but for this year, it's basically a wash, and I think it's a pretty good outcome. Mayor, did I get most of that correct?
You did. Andrea, as far as the budget itself is concerned, and I think that was the key that you hit on, which would have been on page five of your packet there, it shows what is estimated for an ending cash balance at the end of 2016, and it's still gonna be somewhere around $30,000. So they feel that that was more than enough to not have to assess the towns and the city in 2016. The only thing, Henry, and correct me if I'm wrong here, the only thing that is different, I think, is that last year, the recycling district did not assess the city or the townships, but we also didn't have to pay anything to the county last year. Now, this year, we are having to pay to the county, so we do have about $15,000 in additional expenses this year versus what we had in 2015.
Yeah, one thing that the local recycling commission instituted was the per-bag rate went up from two to three, and I think that really helped the revenue side, the local recycling.
There was one other item too, maybe, just to tell you about on the recycling too. Thanks to Roger Hanson for checking this out, but we had a contract with our recycling vendor, and they were not following the contract, and they were charging us too much, and Roger was able to catch up on that, and we were able to get a large refund back from them. And he's on top of that, so we appreciate, even though he's not a member of the recycling district, he is probably the one that works as closely with the recycling center as anybody. So we appreciate that. So you can see that from a city standpoint, the recycling center is not gonna cost us any more money than it did in 2015, but we are going to have to pay recycling charges of $14,643.16, which is an addition to the county this year, so we'll have to include that as an addition in our budget. Anybody have any questions on the recycling? Am I... Who's on the recycling? I can't remember.
It's Mary Price, I think.
But from our... Who's our council members that are on?
Alan.
I think Alan is...
Alan is.
Chuck. Yeah.
Were you at the most recent meeting when they had the budget, or was it Alan that was there?
Either one, I was on there.
Okay. I know Roger was there, and Justin was there also, so...
Justin, right up the city.
Roger Hanson.
Oh, Roger Hanson. Oh, that's right. He was up bear hunting, wasn't he? So it was you!
It was me.
That's right. So we were represented.
Very well.
Well, it's a matter of... Thank you. Anything else?
So, in the future, we may have to pay our local recycling district and the county, maybe, if we do not have cash reserves here in our local?
Well, the cash reserves only go towards the recycling district.
District, yeah.
What we pay to the county is tax, is city tax dollars, so it's not coming out of the recycling district. But as Henry told you, and we're not sure yet, it looks like the state is going to bring those recycling levels back up to where they were in 2014, and if that's the case, then we would assume that the county will not assess us anymore. Although the district is gonna have to start assessing again sooner.
Well, that's quite a question. When would the district have to start assessing? Because someday, it looks like we'll run out of these reserves.
Well, we're assuming that we'll have to start, the recycling district will have to start assessing next. Anybody else have any questions on the recycling? The Fire District, and I know you don't have a printout there, and I am on the Fire District Commission, and I'm also their treasurer, so... district commission, and I'm also their treasurer, so I, on there, so I did take the information that the chief gave us for the budget and put it into a budget format, and I could tell you that our 2016 assessment is going to be one hundred thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-five cents, which is about nineteen hundred dollars more than what it was in 2015. The only reason that it's more is because our equalized value went up, and that's how they base your assessment, is on equalized, the state equalized value of our properties. Ours went up and the towns went down. So we ended up having to pay more, even though the budget stayed exactly the same, fire district budget stayed exactly the same, our assessment actually went up about nineteen hundred dollars, where the towns also reduction. Now, seems a little unfair, but just the opposite happened last year, so it, it probably, we're probably back to where we were in 2014, basically, because we are where we are with the assessment. I don't know if you have any questions there with the fire district, but again, that is going to be an addition to our 2016 budget that was not in there for 2015. Okay, so that takes care of the outside agencies, correct? We don't have any additional ones, but, okay. And I'm assuming that we are going to have discussions on the outside agency at some time, or is this the appropriate time, or maybe there isn't any discussion?
I, I think it's totally appropriate now. I think our next time together, you'll see a more compiled budget, 'cause I wanted to, before I got into mine, talk a little bit about if you want to know yet, but the next time we get together, we should have all the pieces. But again, today was meant to talk about this stuff there, so.
So what did you think, again, and I'll just go back, we'll go right in order here. The request from the Wapaka Historical Society, council members, what did you think? Now, you can see that they're also, probably, it looks like they're gonna request a seven thousand dollars from the room tax again for 2016, and that has not happened yet, but that's in their budget, so. But as far as tax dollars, they're requesting fifteen thousand dollars, which is exactly the same as what we gave them in 2015. Any comments on that? I don't think you can get upset when they keep it the same. No.
I believe it was fifteen per several years.
Les, you're coming up with a big survey. Right. I only wrote down a couple of comments and I didn't really wanna ask Bob at this time, but there were three things that I saw that I thought that, and they probably had these discussions, and that's why I didn't bring it up at this time, but at that time, but I looked at their dues, their membership dues are only seven hundred dollars of their total revenue, wondering if they could maybe increase their dues a little bit. You know, that was one of the things, and I know that in the past, they've had membership drives to try and not only get more members, but also to get more income in dues too. I wonder if they're continuing to do that, I haven't seen. I am a member, so they probably don't send me a membership drive form anymore, but that would be something that I would suggest to them. And they do minimal, minimal fundraising too. I think they do, what did it say, like bake sales or something like that for three hundred and fifty bucks, if I remember looking at that. So again, I'm thinking that those are things that they look at doing also.
I just wanted to say that the current director for the historical society is retiring in December, and Tracy Barrett, who is our exhibit room coordinator, has accepted that position there. And she is, she is very much in favor of raising funds. I think you might see some movement in that area with her at the helm.
So do you?
But she's also in the exhibit room.
And I think too, Mayor, as, as somebody that is an ad hoc member of the community foundation, I mean, the types of programs that they run, and things that they do, they could solicit funds from, from foundation, I'm sure, probably have some previous to that.
I think that's one area that we're gonna have to take a look at, maybe, and, and if we do that, then we should have some suggestions to, to help them out. Fifteen thousand dollars isn't a huge amount, but it's, but it is something that we, if we can come up with some alternatives, maybe that would be helpful to us and then also helpful to them too.
I've also suggested to them that this isn't the City of Wapaka Historical Society, it's the Wapaka Area Historical Society, and they should go to some other townships for money also, which they didn't like, but I suggested to them.
Yeah, I think, Laurie, are you a representative, so you're hearing what we're saying?
Absolutely, you know, and it's, it's a unique little group of people. So I think change with their new director is going to be awesome, 'cause she's more motivated to do that stuff.
Now, do we know how much we gave them last year in room tax? I mean, if they don't get that seven thousand, that just seems high to me from past years, but I don't know.
No, I think they requested, but they got much less than that.
Mm-hmm.
And I think most years, they get, they don't quite get like the budget.
Okay. So I wonder if they're just kinda asking for that and maybe expecting that, and maybe that's why they're asking for the fifteen, or how do they, what's, what's their mindset? Yeah?
Their mindset is they know that, that they, they were going to ask for this, knowing that that probably.
But that won't, Mr. Ryan?
No, I don't, I don't think, well, they're, they seem to be doing well, and I think that with the new person coming on, that's really going to expand that out, some younger energy.
Mayor, you recall years ago, weren't we giving them something more than thirty thousand?
Twenty-five thousand.
Yeah. We did give them that.
We cut it good.
Yeah.
It used to be thirty or thirty-four.
We also suggested though, a few years back, that they go to the room tax committee and request monies too, you know, to replace some of that with tax dollars too. So they weren't always getting room tax money either, but, yeah, we, we have more of that the last few years, and they've actually expanded, I mean, they, they added the depot in the last few years, it's probably been ten years now, but it's been just a few years or so.
Yes, they don't have a mortgage anymore on their building, so they're, they completed that obligation for the mortgage, and so that allows them to spend money in other areas.
Yeah, if you look at their, their budget, which is on page nine, I mean, they come out to exactly zero, so if they don't get the hotel motel tax, I don't know where they're gonna, where they're gonna cut it. Most of it looks like fixed expenses, but I guess that's something they need to look at.
Changes in the hotel motel tax rules, does that change who can get the money? Like, are the stipulations for getting the money any different, or is it just who's giving out the money?
Well, for 2016, it does not make a difference, but for 2017, we'll see some changes there. Although the committee that is put together will be different in the future, they could still qualify for money. They'll just be a little bit different. Okay, again, anybody have any other comments or questions on the historical society? So at this time, you're gonna see in the budget, if I'm understanding everybody, the fifteen thousand dollars that's being requested by the historical society. So you see, and that, is that in there right now, Kathy? I have.
Um, no, it's not. It, it, it's under the, it'll be under the civic promotions of historical society, so on my spreadsheet, I've updated it to fifteen.
But you have not.
I have not updated, because that was gonna be a council decision whether or not to.
Okay. So are we okay with that? At least for now, we haven't seen the bottom line, obviously, I know that works, but at least for, okay. Let's look at Gold Cross, and again, as you heard, Mark, is it Frederickson, is that, am I right? Okay. He is, they're actually lowering the per capita amount from twelve dollars and fifty cents per capita down to eleven dollars and eighty-nine cents. So our cost is going to be around just over seventy-two thousand dollars towards the ambulance service there. And again, this is not a reduction in service, this is the same amount of service that we did receive in 2015. It is not an increase in service, but it, it's not a decrease in service either. I actually asked, Henry to ask Mark to, to put on here that page that talks about the second unit, just so we had an idea, 'cause we have had some complaints about the, and some of them have come from our, our law enforcement, both city and county, on, on the response time. Now, he is explaining that it seems to be just one individual over in the Wyegu area that's creating this issue, so hopefully we'll be able, he'll be able to, or they'll be able to rectify that issue. But obviously, you know, with a, with a second unit just in the Wapaka, Wyegu, New London area, that's gonna double what we would have to pay towards the ambulance service. Now, first of all, I don't think we can afford another seventy-five thousand dollars, and we'd have to convince every one of these individual towns and cities to agree to that too. I don't think I wanna fight that battle, of course, if I don't have enough information to know whether we really need one. And like Mark said, if he thought we needed a second unit, he would certainly tell us that we needed one. Any comments, Laurie?
One thing I see a lot of my travels over to Lake Manawha and New London, if the ambulances are out, it is my understanding, there's one parked just off from the crossings, I always wondered what that ambulance was parked at that intersection by that house, and that they plant one there. So that's why sometimes you could get the longer response times, if it's coming to here or going.
Yeah, what happens, and he, I'm probably not gonna do as good a job as, oh, he explained it to us last year, and also, I've been up there a couple times to their, their main area, and what happens is, is that when Wapaka's ambulance is on response, then the New London ambulance, ambulance will move closer to the Wapaka area, so it will be between Wapaka and New London, so it can go one way or the other. So it does slow down the response time, because obviously, there's further away than our, well, for the most part, our, our local ambulance, but that does bring a second ambulance into our place, into place. So it does slow it down, yes. Chuck?
Yeah, for the slow, I've noticed, when we've gone out on car accidents or things like that, most of the time, you know, it, earlier, when it was the other ambulance, the ambulance would always be there before us. Now, there's times where the fire trucks are getting crashed before the ambulance. There is a delay sometimes on that, that way too, so we've noticed that a couple of times, a few times.
And when we had a local ambulance service, that was not happening?
Most of the time, no, I'd say ninety-nine percent of the time, no, it was not happening. But, you know, I can see it's busy, just like us, if we're out on a call, the second or third call, you know, you're gonna be, you're gonna have a little bit more response times. But I have noticed that a few times in the last year or so.
I think it's important, though, to let Gold Cross know that too, either through Henry or, or through your chief or whoever that might be, so that they know that you've seen some cases where the response time has been slower than what you thought it should be.
Yes, well, that, that could be the few times that he said it was the longer response time also.
Yeah, right, exactly. Chuck, do you think it would be helpful if he came to speak to you folks or some representatives?
Well, we understand.
To get on the same page?
Well, we understand, you know.
Miscommunication?
No, there's no, you know, they get paged out same time we do, and if they're out on the run, you know, that ambulance, that city, like if it's at the crossings or something, you know, that's a height for them to come, or come from Wyegu or wherever the next one comes from, so, you know, they have their travel time and stuff also.
Okay, any other comments on the ambulance service or, and that cost per capita that has gone down? Kathy, again, I'm assuming that you have, you've had this, so you have that in the budget?
I have it in my worksheet, I had not included on yours, but the, the net effect was in the fire EMS, emergency government operations budget, it was a decrease in, in the expenditures, because the decrease in the contract services for ambulance was more than what the request for the increase from the fire department, so the net effect was a decrease of about twelve hundred dollars.
Okay. Yeah, that's without the other towns.
Right. I did, I did.
Much better, yeah.
If it, if it goes down more than, so we'll do worst-case scenario and.
Okay, so we talked about the Gold Cross, we talked about historical society, we talked about the Wapaka Area Fire District Recycling Commission. Now, remember that with three of these, the recycling, the fire district, and the ambulance service, they all have, we are in, we are in that together with the townships that surround us, so they will also need to approve this, and I'm sure you get verification, Kathy, from clerks once they approve those.
Yes.
All right, anything else on the outside agencies? All right, are we okay, Henry, with just going forward then with the department budget presentations?
Yep.
Okay, and you're the first one up?
Well, that's only because it's an A. Anyways.
Before I explain in what form you're looking at?
Oh, well, yeah, what I.
You're gonna be on the binder clip, and you're gonna be, pass the revenues, which are the four, forty-nine, four thousand, then you'll see a budget summary page, the expenditures, let's say, mayor, council, and then the next page will be the council and the mayor, which doesn't change at all, other than the fact that we are no longer going to be doing expenditure adjustments for the charge-offs to the water and sewer and TIF districts as negative expenditures. So we're gonna show that as revenue, so that you can see the total amount that we are supplementing the general operating budget with TIF district and with water and sewer charge-offs, so for transferring of administrative costs. So there's twenty-four thousand dollars that, in the council budget, that gets charged off to the water and sewer funds, and that's been added back, but there's also an offsetting revenue, so the net, net effect of that budget is zero. So the next page is the start of the administrators department.
This, um, I, I've already talked more than I thought I would, but this is the first time that I've seen this budget. Normally, uh, the department had to have presented it to me first and then, so they, they got their first, uh, lashing from me and then they brought it to you, but, uh, that did not happen that, this year. And that was my fault, actually. I was on vacation last week, so I was not able to, uh, to go through this with them. So I do have a couple of comments as we go through it. I, hopefully everybody understands what Kathy is, uh, saying about the, the twenty-four thousand dollar increase that, uh, even though there's a twenty-four thousand dollar increase in expenditures, there's also a twenty-four thousand dollar increase in income. So she's, she's keeping income as income and expenses as expenses, which is what, uh, all good accounts are supposed to do. So, um, we'll, we'll hope that you, you understand when you see those things. Uh, Henry, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, before I go to my budget, I guess I just wanted to hit a couple of global issues with the council and staff who've heard this a little bit already, but, um, our net new construction number was abysmal this year. It was a little over one-half of one percent, and that's going to result in about nine thousand of new revenue. For two thousand and fifteen, I think we were at two point six percent. So we're, whatever, you know, one-fifth or whatever, uh, or, you know, one-ten to where we were before. So, uh, I think the picture looks a little bit better, and Brandon can talk about that when he gets to, to his thing, uh, his presentation. So, that is not, uh, you know, knocking it out of the park in terms of new revenue. Uh, our shared revenue will be up slightly, about four thousand. Uh, expenditure restraint, we don't have, that's one of our unknowns. Uh, we're supposed to, that's supposed to get published in the first part of November. You know, and it could be less than one percent, uh, which means that our general expenses can, can only go up one percent to qualify for that expenditure restraint revenue, they call it. And for those of you who've been on council, that's a fairly significant number. I mean, one year it was as high as one-seventy, and I think now it's down to like one-forty-five or something. Uh, I think more and more governments have qualified for the same, unlimited rule. So, um, but as Kathy talked generally very early on, with the library, uh, budget being taken out of the general budget, it really gives us a lot of room for some expenditure restraint. So, while I've said that, I don't know that we really need to be too concerned about it. But, um, that is a very low, uh, inflation factor compared to last year. Uh, straight, state transportation aids are down forty thousand dollars from this year. And, you know, I think that's going to be one of our projects, working with Justin and Keith and Kathy to, you know, look how we're filling out this state Form C that has to get filled out every year and it shows our expenses. And I think we might have been a little bit of a victim of how we were budgeting and doing, uh, our, how we were expensing things. And so, um, Kathy has, I don't know if we need to go into tonight, but I think there's probably, um, some opportunity here for next year on how we're accounting for our costs that, that could help our state aids. I think this year we're at the floor. We're at the absolute minimum that they, uh, will give us. It's sort of a whole harmless number. Um, the health insurance, uh, is going to go up two and a half percent of monthly premiums. And this will be borne by the city employees, you know, by council policy. Just to put it in perspective, it, it's, we're at about twelve point six percent of premium. The employees will go up to fourteen point seven to sixteen point five percent. Uh, the increase for a single is like thirteen bucks or more a month, uh, and a family is sixty-four bucks more a month. So, um, that increase was very much mitigated because we went to market this year. I mean, I think we were looking at eight. Now, I think we at Trust was a great insurer, and time will tell how this new group will do. But in terms of the pricing, uh, I mean, I think our employees are, are very, uh, happy that, that that outcome is, is what it is. Our retirement is down slightly, uh, for this year. We were contributing six point eight percent in two thousand and fifteen, and we're now down to six point six percent. Not a huge savings, but it's something. I mean, it's going in the right way. And there is a, um, a rule making out right now. I'm not going to get the department right. A federal department, is it Department of Labor, has put out some new, uh, guidance on payment of overtime. And the threshold that, uh, salaried employees that would qualify, uh, for overtime, you know, that threshold has been moved up to like fifty thousand dollars and it was at like twenty-four, twenty-six maybe, uh, currently. Now, that's still in the rulemaking, I believe, and it isn't official, but we want to watch that because we have a couple of salaried employees that are under that threshold. So, uh, and then finally, the mayor talked a little bit about hotel motel, motel tax, and Julian did as well. This is the last year that we're going to be doing it like we always did. Uh, in two thousand and seventeen, uh, we have to, um, go reach an agreement and partner with a tourism entity. And they have to be organized, a tourism entity, over fifty percent of their expenditures have to be tourism related. I can tell you the Chamber is organizing such an organization. I think the pretty close mayor come, to coming to the city with their formal request. Basically, as I understand this scenario, we would continue to collect the money and basically give that to them. Uh, we can retain administrative fee and, and some of the money, uh, well, thirty percent of the total take, we can keep. And I think we are at about two hundred and twenty thousand this year, Kathy?
Yeah.
So we can keep thirty percent of that money. So actually with the new rules, we'll get some more revenue than we had in the past. Now, it's, again, that hotel motel tax kind of fluctuates, right, because it's all based on lodging. But that, that is something that you'll hear more about in, uh, two thousand and sixteen. I don't know if there's any questions on that? Okay, for my budgets, uh, you know, you'll see, and Kathy already alluded to it, the mayor, uh, there was some, you know, some negative charge off, negative, negative, uh, expenses that's going to be removed. In my administrator budget, I am requesting a thousand dollars to, uh, compensate an intern. Been using them periodically over the last couple of years. I think we get some value from them. And it gives them a great, uh, experience to work in, in local government. But, uh, my budget essentially is unchanged. In terms of the clerk's budget, um, I'm accounting for a fourth election next year. That's the presidential election. So we've got a little more money, uh, in wages, uh, for poll workers. And, uh, supplies and maintenance of equipment. Uh, our machines are getting older. So the net effect of that is an increase of about thirty-five hundred dollars in, uh, in the elections, uh, budget. And then the clerk budget is unchanged. Down a hundred and fifty-nine dollars. I don't know. My budget's kind of boring. There's not much to talk about. So if you have any questions, there's, or?
The next one is airport, and I thought I'd just turn that one over to Kathy. She's been talking a little bit about that. Where are we going to find that?
Um, the airport should be a separate, um, handle. It's a one-page, it starts with, the account number is two forty-five. And it'll say Airport Fund on House.
For the, um, airport, um, there, there, the driving factor that pretty much was that everything was going to stay the same. The manager's contract services change based on the percentage increase that the non-reps get. So, his, um, managers are, are the same right now. What'll happen, um, is that they have, uh, been very profitable on their fuel sales. They've also been profitable with their rent of their hangars. So, um, my, my take was to, um, take some tax levy support away from them and give it back to the general fund. Uh, the other one is, is they have a schedule, um, to be participating in the borrowing at, next year from the State Trust Fund loan. Forty thousand dollars towards, uh, rehabilitation of the tarmac and taxiway. Uh, it's a federal proj- project, and we only have to pay forty thousand dollars towards it. The good thing is, is they have sufficient fund balance that I'm going to make them pay cash for that also, instead of borrowing for it. And so that will, um, allow, uh, forty thousand dollars to be reallocated of that, um, debt, debt service, um, bond to, um, roads so that Justin has a little bit more than a hundred thousand dollars then to do the roads, which will help our transportation aids. So, um, there's a reason for, for doing some of the stuff that we're doing. Uh, otherwise, the budget is pretty much, uh, unchanged. If anything, the fuel, uh, is the driving cost at the airport and, um, the utilities. And, uh, it's, um, pretty, it's pretty set, so it's not that big of, uh, of, of change other than the, um, forty thousand dollars for the, uh, construction.
Now, that was approved as part of the borrowing package by a council vote. How can you just all of a sudden come apart and say that's not going to be happening?
Well, what I did was, um, the council approved the borrowing for, uh, for certain projects in that. And what, what'll happen is, is when we get to the debt service and the capital improvement, you'll see that this is, this is what's going to be recommended to do. So it's not, I am, I'm not, I'm just giving you, as I said, this is a working document that this is my, my presentation to you on a different funding mechanism to be able to change where we're getting the money to do these projects. If, if you want to continue to borrow for the forty thousand dollars for the tarmac and taxiway, that's fine. We'll put that in and we'll leave the fund balance alone in, in, in the, in the airport fund. But, my recommendation would be, is to use that cash, um, that the airport has to be able to avoid having debt towards the airport.
Well, what I would want to do is find out if that cash is designated or needed for something else prior to doing that. I would want to ask those questions.
I had already talked to Pete and, and he didn't seem to have an, an issue with that. But I hadn't heard anything back from him, you know, that the airport board had changed, had, had some, said something different. I had presented them, him this budget.
Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to have that, I don't know if that was ever discussed at Airport Board because I was sick the last meeting, but I'd like to have that brought up at Airport Board and have that, um, approved, uh, or at least, uh, informed the Airport Board that that's what, what would be happening.
Okay. Like I said, I hadn't, I hadn't heard back that it was any different.
Kathy, the, when you talk about the fund balance, I appreciate you showing us the fund balance. This fund balance is grouped with all of our funds together, right? This is not like a separate checking account that, like a separate entity like the Water Department or the Sewer Department?
When you look at our, um, financial statements, this will be in the supplemental information in the back of your financial statements. And, and it's one of the other governmental funds. So if you looked at everything except, all of the governmental funds together, which is the general fund and everything else but the three utilities, that, that includes the Tiffs, you'll see what our fund balance is. It, it, as far as, uh, the ability to, to move or use that fund, it, on the back side of the paper, is the designation of those funds. You have non-expendable because it's inventory. It's your fuel inventory at, at the airport. So I know I don't have that money as cash to be able to buy, put in, in, in the taxiway. So, um, you have a restricted fund balance, but it's restricted strictly for the use of the airport. When you read the financials, that's what the restriction is. It isn't that it's there for, uh, uh, transferring out to the general fund. So you couldn't use their fund balance to supplement the, the, the general. So what my, my take is, is then use, use the, the fund balance that's there to be able to pay for some of the assets that the airport has instead of borrowing for.
And so along with Paul, uh, had recommended, uh, when is the next airport meeting?
We're going to have a special meeting on the twenty-first of October. And that's somebody get a chance back on, but, um, the, they're going to be looking at a snowplowing protocol for all users of the airport, get that in place, and we can get it in place before the snow flies. And we could talk about that this, I, at that time.
Okay. Okay, so we'll be able to take care of this through the budget process. Anybody else have any comments or questions about the, uh, airport? Good, uh, next then we have, uh, Finance. I'm assuming that you, Kathy, also?
Yeah, that's me.
Where are we writing that one?
That should be, uh, right after the Elections Department.
Well, there's IT.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm going to be moving some departments around, so I'm trying to get everybody used to it. But it starts with the HR Department, um, which is right now Tina in my office. And you'll be seeing a lot of these accounts go away as we get rid of accounts and, and shrink down to a department. But I, the only increase I have in, in my budget is, one, I've taken out the, um, money spent over to the Tiff and the Water and Sewer Utility. And I've, um, brought in the sixty-five hundred dollars for the software maintenance of the soft, the financial software because it used to be budgeted in Josh's, in IT and Communications. And I feel that that's my, that's part of my department and should be, um, reflected in, in, into that. So, uh, other than that, um, I didn't change anything in my budget. I believe that we can work with the funds that we have available.
So we can assume that, you said the same thing with the charge-offs to the Tiff and the Water and Sewer, that we're going to see, uh, a revenue that offsets that again?
Correct.
And that we're going to see that through all this?
Right, so if you've seen, and that's the biggest increases that you'll see in these budgets. It's going to be that, that offset, um, that's going into, that's being offset by another revenue.
Yeah, mainly it'll be like Justin, who's got charge-off.
Justin has.
Five guy, the council.
Brennan.
Brennan.
My department, and Henry's. So you'll see that they're, they're not there, but they'll be, they'll be, there's about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we charge off to the Tiffs and to the Water and Sewer Utilities for administration costs. And I, I think it's a lot, um, cleaner to show that, that that's where your revenue sources are. And it's also, um, it'll show you how much you're relying on. And that's one of the things with the Tiff districts that we want to show, that we will have to show the other ta- uh, taxi and jurisdictions for the, um, that we will have to show the other tax, taxing jurisdictions for the, for financially reporting to the, for them, for the TIFs in seventeen. So I wanna make sure that they see that. I don't wanna have them see each department. I wanna see them, here, this is the line I have, this is how much each TIF is gonna have, is, is getting from, from each of the, from the departments and why we're doing it, to justify those. And if we have to start weaning ourselves off of it as the TIFs start closing, then it's easier to just adjust that revenue than it is to go into each department and do adjustments. So it's just a housekeeping reporting.
You guys are catching what she's saying about the TIFs in that there are some basic reporting requirements that are coming in that the other taxing authorities have the right to see how we're using those monies. Kathy's making it easier for them to be able to see that by separating these lines also. In the past, there was not reporting requirements, so they just took our word?
No, no, we sent them our audit.
Well, you sent them their, the audit.
But this, but going forward, I think they're still gonna give direction on what's gotta be in that report.
Yes, and we'll be also.
But it's gonna be a lot more transparent.
We'll also be reporting what we use, we offset to the department of revenue.
Okay.
Otherwise, you've never reported, we've never reported that. So that's, that's coming in seventeen. So I wanna just get the, the base started for, for reporting going forward. Otherwise, that's all I have for my department.
Okay. Everybody have any questions? Other questions?
Kathy, is that, the reporting, is that just for transparency sake? Or is there gonna be some type of limits attached that the state's gonna mandate? What is the reason?
I, I think the legislature pretty much wouldn't put that, that in because they've been getting complaints from the school districts and the counties as to, you know, how much is being charged off on the TIFs to supplement operations. Cause if you have a very good TIF, you could say, well, you know, I do a lot of stuff and, you know, this whole department, if you look at it, once we're done with Justin's department, between fifty percent of his salary going to water and sewer, you also have another twenty-five percent going to the TIFs. So only twenty-five percent, if you really looked at it, twenty-five percent of engineering and administration is in the operating budget. So if any of those fundings go away, you, you don't see what the impact is. So, and, and because of the change with moving the library out, we have the capacity to fix the reporting with expenditure restraint and not have a problem.
I think that's a good comment though Scott. There's somebody out there that's not happy and they wanna see what's going on, so.
And if they see the wrong things, it's.
So we're gonna probably see, as every community will, so repercussions. Okay, that was finance. Next, we have Parks and Rec. Erin?
Yes. Kathy, can you tell them more? Isn't that, I don't have the big packet.
Yes, you did. Way, it's almost way to the back. See, Henry did it all by kind of alphabetical and I did it based on the reporting, so. But it starts with the rec center, recreation center.
All right. And I have a, we have a number, a number of different line items, or categories within our budget in the Parks and Rec department. I'll just start it off by saying, we're not asking for any more money than last year. In fact, it's, we're asking for about, between operations and adult, the adult fund, it's about fourteen thousand dollars less than two thousand fifteen's request. And I'll just take you through kinda how we came to those numbers. My, I, I apologize if we're flipping back and forth. The, the copy I have is I have cemetery first. So cemetery, we have added savings. Obviously, we had an employee that was with us for thirty-plus years. We're hiring a new employee, we're planning on hiring a new employee sometime in February, March. We have had some savings there. We feel like we have that, that pay range set at a competitive wage and that's where we saw about six thousand dollars in savings. We also had budgeted more than was needed for that in the past, for that specific salary line item. So that was most of the savings in the cemetery. Next, I do have the rec building.
Erin, where are you? Cemetery, cemetery? What's the process?
We're still waiting because of sick pale. So we're waiting for that gap to catch up. So we're looking at the March timetable, cause we, we've been at a hundred eight percent for that, for, since that time. So we're just kinda waiting for that. Rec building is our next. We, this is pretty close to the same, we have about six hundred and twenty-three dollars in savings there. And that is just because concessions for a rec building. I know when we worked with Gene in the past, we had budgeted a little more for concessions to meet expenditure constraint limits. And it sounds like that is not an issue this year, so that's where we see some of the savings there. Youth center is next. That is about the exact same, a hundred and thirty-six dollars different to the lesser. Parks, we do, we did move some things around here and we do have an increase in the parks. It's about six thousand dollar increase and that is in maintenance of facilities. The reason for that is that we have projects that need to be done year in and year out that we just don't do because we don't have the money to do it. Whether it be floors and park shelters or bathrooms or, or whatever it may be. There's something that we're always waiting to see what we can do in November at the end of the year. And that will greatly help keep our facilities up. And with an overall budget being fourteen thousand dollars less, I, I had put an extra five thousand, three hundred dollars in maintenance of facilities. Our beaches would be next, we're a beach, that's about the same, five hundred ninety-five dollars less. Rec administration, about the same, six hundred and fifty-two dollars more. Youth programs, we came in less on this, but this is why we're going through this. Ten thousand dollars less in youth, youth programs. But the reasoning for that is also, it was a huge chunk out of our concession expenditures. That was another one that was budgeted high in the past to meet those expenditure constraints. That was over eight thousand dollars there. So it's, it's not that any less is going into the youth programming side. It's mainly in that concession area. And then our senior citizens, this is, went from ninety-nine thousand, one fifty-seven to ninety-six, four thirteen. And again, a part of that is we had someone that was with us for about twenty-five years, and Terry. We have hired a new person that, once again, we feel like is in at a competitive rate with that same position in other communities. And we also took a grant line item, we're switching how we do things. In the past, we have had grants for, or not grants, I apologize, fundraisers. So they do a craft show fundraiser. It was twenty-five hundred dollars that was budgeted each year for that. Instead, I'm working with Kathy and we're gonna put it into donation line item or put it into the friends of the parks. So that's why you see that come out of the operational budget. And that's about it for that. Our adult recreation fund, we're at about nineteen hundred dollars less. And that's because our adult recreation leagues and programs, they're expected to recover all the cost of what it takes to put on those programs. And our men's softball, which is our largest, we have seen declining numbers in that. And that is the main reason for that decrease.
We don't have the adult one because it was one of those that just didn't get copied soon enough.
At the break, we can go up and get them.
Yeah, they, they should be all running.
And that is about all I have.
Before I forget, comment, Henry, maybe you said this, but I was looking at the wages. So right now, in your package, you are seeing a zero percent increase in wages for two thousand sixteen?
Except for the police department. There is contract wages.
For a union?
For the union. And, and that additional six months funding of the half officer that you budgeted last year. So he's budgeted for full year this year. So that's the increase in the salaries.
So we'll see that when Chief presents his budget there. And then my other comment, and I don't know how, if anybody's interested in this, but we are seeing some savings in wages for your senior coordinator. Has there been any thought on maybe increasing per hours?
The only problem with that is she's at twenty-nine right now and as a result of the healthcare act.
So it'd end up costing us a lot more by just increasing three hours?
Right. Much, much more.
All right. Okay, thanks. Erin, any questions for Erin? Comments? Okay, we have planning and development. That is Brennan. You have the handout, right?
Yeah, there's two pages. I think that my actual budget, I think it's the last, it's the last page of the packet you guys got. And then I also prepared a separate memo for you guys. In general, looking at the budget for this year, twenty fifteen, you are gonna see some savings in my department. We did make some staffing changes earlier this year, right around April time, and changed some job descriptions and positions, which resulted in one way employees going down to a part-time employee. And savings you're seeing right now is not paying in for a full-time salary. With that, we are, with the authorization of the county council, we did, are out for recruitment right now for a part-time co-enforcement officer. Be happy or glad to say that we did have five candidates, we had more than five candidates. We probably had about ten or twelve that submitted. Five qualified candidates that we're gonna interview at the end of October here. And hopefully bring a recommendation forward to you guys in November for consideration. Some of the additional stadiums that we'll have, in order to try to streamline the process for our building inspection and co-enforcement, there may be some additional funds expended for some new software to bring into the department as well, similar to, you know, what Erin has done and everything else. We're on a very archaic, man-made system right now, which is definitely a, a bit of a challenge. And hopefully try to, a little more customer service will be looking at some software changes going into twenty fifteen. As Kathy mentioned previously, on a positive note, we have had some significant construction value growth in the community this year. The memo identifies, you know, permit values coming in in twenty twelve, you had twelve point four, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, or six point three and five point six. To date, what we have out on the street is about thirty-three billion dollars worth of new value being added. I will caution that, that a significant portion of that is Bethany Holmes, which is at about eighteen million. And we were talking about beforehand, that eighteen million unfortunately, because they are tax exempt, does not count, does not count towards our, that new construction numbers. But hopefully looking at for, it'd be for the twenty seventeen budget, we'll be getting those, those new numbers. We'll hopefully see right around twelve to fifteen new million, twelve to fifteen billion dollars of new construction that will be able to hopefully help our budgets in the future years. So that's definitely a positive. A lot of that's contributed to customer enterprises doing their expansion. The Foundry has two different expansions going on right now, one at plant one and one at plant two and three. And I, and there's rumors of more expansion to come. So that's definitely a positive for our end here. Twenty sixteen budget is pretty much status quo on the operational side. Other than whatever the council allocates for salaries and wages, that's gonna be the only increase in my budget. The, the savings are being reallocated to a couple of different line items for the part-time co-enforcement officer along with some software leases in the future. So that's where the main expenditures will come. As part of this budget as well, I wanted to bring forward some, and that's on the second page of my memo description, a couple of different changes in my department when it comes to building, permit fees and inspection fees, along with planning and zoning fees. We haven't updated our fees since two thousand four within the plant or within the building department. Our fees are, are a little bit out of date, they're not in line with a lot of our surrounding communities. So I've worked with John over the last year to, to take a look at not only mainly our surrounding communities, whether it's Steena's Point, with Sharon County, with Toma. And the proposed fees that you have in your packet are, are modest increase, so what we're seeking. The new fees, based upon utilizing data from probably twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, we can't use this year's numbers, cause there, you know, there's been a bunch of growth. You would, we would expect to see about five or six thousand hours of new income revenue coming in next year with the proposed fee increase. Again, it's a modest fee, a modest increase in a lot of the fees where you'd see maybe, you know, anywhere from the fifty to a hundred dollars increase on some of the larger projects that you had coming in. But it's really, you know, based upon, again, our fees haven't been increased since two thousand four. No new fees are being requested, other than a re-roofing fee of twenty-five dollars. In two thousand nine, the council actually eliminated that fee, cause it's pretty, it's based on the value or cost going into it. So someone that had a ten thousand dollar roof going in could pay upwards of almost two hundred, two hundred dollars for a fee. So in two thousand nine, they waived it, but we would like to reintroduce it at twenty-five dollars, cause John still does need to process the permit and go out and inspect the roof when it's all done. So we're trying to recoup some of our costs there. But those are the fees that we're looking to propose. Again, they fall in line, we've, in the past, have looked at Sharon County as kind of our counterpart for these fees and they fall in line with that community or county as a whole. On the planning and zoning side of it, we are looking for some new changes as well. There are some fees in here that we don't charge for right now. And I believe the, the philosophy in the past has been, you know, we're business friendly by not having fees, whether it's a site plan fee or some, some other development fees when they actually make an application. I am actually looking to implement some new fees for next year, which would be site plan fees, also increasing some of the rezone fees or special use permit fees. Some of the applications that we do see and we have seen do take a significant amount of time. We're not recouping some of the staff costs that are associated with that. Some of these projects that we do have take a lot longer than expected or there's a lot of different challenges, or they just take a lot of research and review. And so we would like to, you know, move a little bit more towards the philosophy that most municipalities have, where development pays for development type of proposal. We're not gonna recoup all our costs on, on a staff level, but at least we'll receive some income from the, the fees that we're proposing here to offset some of the costs. In addition to that as well, I have spoken with Kathy and I've spoken with Henry and actually I've spoken with the mayor as well about this. My previous employer, we implemented what was called a pre-development agreement. The pre-development agreement is a, pretty much kind of like a, kind of like a small contract that the developer would have with the municipality. They would deposit a certain amount of money based upon the size of the project. A lot of the projects that we have now, and either require outside counsel to look at that, whether it's a developer's agreement or with Justin still being on board, we, we don't have an engineer right now, so we are incurring costs for engineering review for all of our projects that we have. That shouldn't be borne by the citizens, that should be borne by the developer. So with this pre-development agreement, we would be looking to charge back those costs from outside consultants, back to that monetary deposit. And then if there's any money left over at the end of it, those funds would be returned to the developer. At the end of the day, again, we're not looking to recoup, you know, pretty much any of staff time. It's mainly looking to recoup our outside consultants, whether it's our council, whether it's our engineering firm for this project. It's not uncommon, it's utilized in a lot of municipalities. A lot of municipalities actually just charge back the entire amount. A lot of municipalities require a site plan fee plus charge of that staff time. And we're not looking to do that. We're not looking to gouge developers here. We understand that we are a smaller community, we don't wanna scare anybody. We understand that there, you know, there are two different types of developers out there. There's some that, you know, know the process and they're actually shocked when they, when they come and don't have any fees to deal with anything. There's other developers that we do have to do a little handholding, handholding. And we're still gonna do that, you know, we're still gonna be customer service based and we're always gonna be open for business. But in a time where some of these projects are taking significant staff time, not just myself, Uh, and, uh, we're always gonna be open for business, but, um, in a time where some of these projects are taking significant staff time, not just myself, but Henry, Kathy, and, uh, Justin, we, we do need to try to recoup some of our fees that we have, so that's why we're looking at the, not only the fee increases for the planning and zoning, but also moving towards a pre-development agreement starting in twenty sixteen.
Two, two points. Brennan, uh, it's been ten years since we did building permits. I don't know, did, did we do the site plan review and zoning change at that time? I, I don't recall that we did those fees.
No.
At that time, these fees are even older.
Yeah, I mean, the, the building fees had, were two thousand four. I do not have the history on when, if the fees for the planning and zoning were ever changed. Uh, again, what I'm proposing is, and this was based off of Rhonda's research, we looked at very similar communities around us, our size, communities, uh, within the general vicinity, and the fees that we're proposing fall in line with what other communities have as well. So again, we're not looking to gouge developers here. Um, it's, uh, again, just looking at trying to recoup some of our costs, so our taxpayers don't have to, you know, burden the cost of all development that does come into the city here.
The other point I wanted to make, remember we did a pilot agreement with Bethany this past year as well as, um, Sunny Day, and for the first time, we're gonna get a pilot on the existing nursing home. It's, uh, about fifty, fifty-four hundred, so between the two of those, it's about sixty-five hundred dollars, uh, in pilot fees this year. That's new. And then, uh, Bethany puts their new addition, big new addition on, that's another sixteen thousand in pilot payments. And we'll see, will they be done at the end of sixteen?
Probably. They're, they're at about a twenty-month construction.
Yeah, so we might not see that extra money till twenty eighteen.
Yeah, and one of the challenges in what you're seeing here, we, we're also moving towards having tenant occupancy permits starting next year as well. One of the challenges we have on the, on the personal property and assessment side of it is, we never know when some of these businesses are coming in, and it's taken around four hours trying to track all this down. Uh, so we are gonna request or require that, you know, businesses that are moving into the community do file for a tenant occupancy permit. It's gonna be a nominal fee. Uh, there'll be a little checklist that, you know, John can go and make sure the space is up to date and everything else. But then we'll also have a record on file of the new businesses that come into the community, and that'll help Rhonda, the assessment side of the personal property side minimize and streamline some of that process as well. The pre-development agreement, uh, just like the, if you look on the memo, the site plan review, I've broken it up into two different fees based upon the square footage of the building. We would be looking for something similar for the pre-development agreement, uh, deposits, and I would actually utilize the pre-development agreement, uh, monetary deposit as a way to pay for the site plan fees and everything else, so we're not double charging people.
Okay, any questions or comments? Good to go with this, this one also? Uh, next is, uh, Public Works. Justin?
All right, um, thinking your package, you turn to this page, I'll pretty much just touch on this one that gives a general overview. I'm not sure where it is exactly, but.
It's after the police department.
Uh, so instead of going through every single sheet and every single item, I'll just kind of wrap it up, summarize it here. Uh, Public Works Administration, you're seeing an increase of eighteen thousand dollars with, uh, that is, is, uh, the admin charge from the TIF, as Kathy had mentioned earlier, uh, which is roughly thirty grand, offset by, uh, some savings in, uh, salaries. The next couple ones, machinery and equipment, um, and even further down, the snow and ice, the street cleaning. Uh, we have some older equipment getting older. Uh, basically our street sweeper, active truck, and a bunch of tow trucks are getting older. We're asking for more money to maintain them just for the maintenance on the vehicles. Uh, and that's just kind of based on the, the trends, um, past years. Cost is creeping up. We need more money to, to maintain these vehicles to continue to run. The highway street maintenance, where you're seeing a savings, is actually the savings of wages of not having a position filled for so long and trying to get this payout done. Uh, we're actually gonna see a little bit, uh, saved there. And finally, that ten thousand dollars for the traffic control, uh, in the street lighting. There was ten thousand dollars that was in, uh, capital purchase plan last year or two, uh, and that was just for signs, uh, pavement marking. Well, we're not gonna put that in capital anymore. We're gonna put that in our maintenance budget, so we have to increase that by ten thousand in order to continue to maintain proper signage and, and marking. The rest of it, we're not asking for any more. And that's pretty much it, so the overall, we're gonna be increasing roughly forty grand. Uh, that's pretty much all on the street side of it. Uh, the facilities, we did a little balancing. We are, uh, asking less for our phone bill, and that's basically just on past trends. Did a little balancing act on training and travel, but the overall of facilities for us is, we're actually saving a, a couple hundred bucks. So really what you're seeing here from, uh, Public Works or Street is, uh, increased costs for maintaining our vehicles. Uh, and then a, a pretty good chunk of change that was in capital that we're now gonna incur underneath our maintenance budgets.
Yeah, again, I, I think what we're seeing is we've got a lot of room because of moving the library out, and we can now put back into general fund. Through the years, we've kind of played that shell game to need expenditure restraint. And, um, this didn't seem reasonable to borrow for, let's see, it's a maintenance item.
Yeah.
Okay, so, Justin, again, if I, if we take the amount out that is being charged off or whatever, which is that difference, the eighteen thousand dollars, then we're actually looking at about, uh, what is that, about a nineteen thousand dollar increase in your budget? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody have any comments, questions?
Say that again, your last statement?
Well, if you look at the bottom of that summary page, that he was saying your thirty-seven thousand dollars, thirty, thirty-eight thousand dollars. Eighteen of that is, is because of the difference in how they're recording the, the write-offs, so the, the rest is actual increase in budget over the previous year, which is about twenty thousand dollars. Peg, go ahead.
I just wondered, um, I know that when, uh, when Aaron hired a new senior center coordinator, that person wasn't paid the same amount as the person who'd been there for twenty-eight years. Um, I know it's been the practice at the Public Works level to hire in at the same rate that you're paying the person who's leaving, retiring, who's maybe worked for thirty years. Within our libraries, uh, we have that wage range where we can, when we hire somebody, we're gonna place them less than somebody who's worked for thirty years. It's almost, uh, an insult to the person who's put all that time in to now say, well, your replacement's being paid just as much as you worked thirty years' experience. And I know that you're without those ranges within your department because you were a junior.
Yeah, that's correct. In twenty sixteen, we'd like to move to that, uh, when we finally get around to hiring a guy in, in September time. Uh, right now, the person we're gonna try and hire just before winter time, uh, we're gonna stay with our old practices just because we hired a guy earlier, twenty fifteen. You know, and he's getting the same as everyone else. That's a skilled crew person. Um, you know, we feel it's not appropriate this time to hire another guy in twenty fifteen and then implement a wage, uh, range and try to give them, uh, you know, a tier to get a bill back up again. But yes, it's something that I'm very interested in doing, uh, going forward, twenty sixteen. You're right. I mean, why should a guy who's just started get paid just as much as somebody who's been here for twenty-five years? That, to me, doesn't make much sense, so, uh, it's something we'll, we want to do in the future, and we expect to see savings then. Right now, we can't really forecast that. It's, you know, it's just, we don't have anything in place. And by the time we do hire somebody, it will be late twenty sixteen, and if we see savings, then it'll be the last few months of the year, and then we'll, we can kind of put that into our twenty seventeen.
Peg, there isn't still that probationary wage of ninety percent for the six months, or if it's extended. Kathy, you ready?
Um, the reason why the ten thousand dollars of, or is brought, being brought in is, um, Roger Hanson had informed to me that the ten thousand that was in the, uh, borrowing for streets was just to stripe, to switch streets, buy some street signs and that, and you're now paying ten thou, you know, you've got ten thousand dollars that are, is on a ten-year note. So, um, in the, I thought, when it said street signs, that it was for redoing street signs. And John didn't give me any, any, anything different, so if you were replacing a whole set of street signs, then you could borrow, make it, that would be justification to have that as a borrow. But to borrow just for maintenance of your streets, you know, replacement of your street signs and striping, it, it, it wasn't worth it. So I, I did instruct Justin that we put that in the operations budget. It's regular striping of, of, of the street, um, and it shouldn't be borrowed by.
Okay, Julia, Julia, did you have your hand up?
That was actually my question.
This is, uh, anybody else have any other questions, comments, uh, for Public Works? This is, uh, always interesting when we look at these amounts and we don't know what the bottom line is. We keep wanting to turn the page and see what that bottom line is, but, uh, that's, uh, something that, uh, we're not gonna get completely denied anyways. I know, Henry, you had a, set up a break after the library and the police. Uh, does anybody have any issues if we take a break, uh, right now and then start with the library right after the break? Take about a ten-minute break, seven, eight-minute break or so? All right, we all set? So the next department that's up is our library. Peg?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to remind you, we are the Waupaca area public library, and that means that we serve not just the city of Waupaca, but the surrounding townships. Uh, we circulate about three hundred thousand items annually. Um, and unlike some of our smaller libraries in the county, we have two floors of services that we provide, so we can't get by with a much smaller crew than we have. We really almost have to have five people to open the library. And it's interesting because over the last year or so, we have seen a switch where four, uh, it used to be that the towns would have a greater percentage than the city of our circulation, and we've seen this movement where forty-one percent of our circulation is to city of Waupaca residents and thirty-nine percent to towns, so we're winning. And we wanna continue to be one of the best libraries in the state. Kathy came to me this year and asked if we would, uh, be a fund or, or, it said that we, we really need to make you a fund. And what that means for us is that all of those revenues that we have that come into the library are retained by the fund, and, um, we ask for a budget, uh, and if we have money left over at the end of the year, we, we, we keep that money. Conversely, if we would go over budget, we would need to borrow from the general fund and then pay that back. Our request this year, uh, we did stay in line with the zero percent increase. Um, and as you look at our revenues, it looks like, oh my goodness, we're gonna have a hundred and eleven thousand dollars greater than we did last year. When in fact, what we've done is we've taken the building budget, a hundred and five thousand, three hundred and five dollars that will be coming into our fund, and we will be funding that through the library fund. But this is not something new because every year when I report to the state our expenditures, it includes the expenditures that we have for our building. And it's about seventy-five percent of the cost of the building. We are much more than two-thirds, even though that would be the, the area you would see. We have three-quarters of the traffic, if not more, and three-quarters of the supplies. So seventy-five percent of that building fund is attributed to library, including the cleaning staff and the building superintendent. Um, our county aid for two thousand, uh, sixteen is expected to go down this year. Um, and we can say that is somewhat because we have a difference in the cost of circulation. Uh, we had a pretty flat year in two thousand fourteen, and that's what we're looking at for a two thousand fifteen, uh, bill to the county. Um, our cost per circulation was two dollars and eighty-six cents per circulation. Uh, there was only other, one other library in Waupaca County that had a lower cost, and that was two dollars and forty cents per circulation for Prima, which is a very small library. The highest cost per circulation in the county is Manawa Public Library, and they have three dollars and ninety-five cents for circulation. So we are competitive. We are, uh, those costs, we are keeping those down. Um, we have continued to a level out at about three hundred thousand circulations. Um, so knowing that we will be, uh, getting less money from the county, and we have been asked to come in with a zero, um, increase for the property taxes, we have found about two thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars or that, about that amount in our budget to cut for two thousand sixteen. Now, we have some other revenue that will, uh, offset cost increase. We have, uh, we expect a donation of about six thousand dollars from the library foundation for our exhibit room coordinator and the fundraising, uh, portion that our library staff helps the foundation do. This is kind of new. It's gonna be happening for the first time this year, and then we expect that in two thousand seventeen. So we're, we're gonna be able to work within this, this budget. Um, some of the areas that we're going to be cutting costs are, um, we're going, uh, to have five hundred dollars less in the magazines and newspapers. We're hoping that somebody within the community will want to help us fund either one or more of our newspapers for the public. We have people coming to read daily. Uh, we're going to have three hundred and ninety dollars left in, less in our technologies budget. Um, and we're, we're hoping that maybe our technologies expenses won't be as great once we're starting to get towards the end of our RFID project. Our promotions, we're going to try and do more online and low-cost publications, uh, and that, we are going to be cutting that. And our supplies budget, we're looking at some, um, some way to cut down on the number of processing pieces that we need that will help us balance that budget. So we are coming in at a zero increase for, uh, for our, um, levy, if you wanna call it that. The, uh, amount that the city is going to have to come from taxes. We, uh, we, we are committed to being, offering opportunities for innovation and engaged learning. That is our mission, and our vision is to be known as a community resource that will promote innovation, technology, collaboration, and all forms of literacy. And our values are, um, striving to be inclusive, opening doors for increased engagement, responsive, collaborating with partners to meet community needs, respectful, a welcoming environment, open yet private, and accessible by offering up-to-date technology and resources. It is different for our library board to look at both the, uh, revenue as well as the expenditures, and when we do look at that, we see that the city of Waupaca actually only pays seventy thousand dollars more than the county aid that we receive, so, um, it's, it's a bargain for the people who live in the city as well as those people who live in the county and are contributing to, uh, to our library, which is, then said, one of the best in the state. Our library board did approve this draft budget this evening.
What was your thinking behind reducing the, the projected library fees from fifteen thousand down to thirteen thousand?
Um, we have not been, uh, that is a number that was plugged into We have not been, that is a number that was plugged into overdue fees by the city in the last couple of years, and we have not met that $15,000. It's really much closer to $13,000, even though that was a number that was a placeholder. If you look at our other fees, we get meeting room, some money for meeting rooms, and then we have some printing costs. We have not kept the library overdue fees within the library fund in the past. That has gone to the general fund, and it's just been a placeholder as a revenue for the city in the past. So, now it's going to be retained. We haven't reached $15,000 in three years, so I don't know why it wasn't there.
Probably aren't getting as many library fees, because my wife is now an employee, and she doesn't have to pay them.
We have just a much more responsible...
The library will be closing in ten minutes. Please ring your selection to the front desk for checkout.
Ten minutes.
And we leave in ten minutes, right?
Yeah. Building's closed, we gotta go.
I think, Paul, what's happening is that our, our patrons are becoming more responsible. And we have a lot of people who get these text messages when you have something due, and they can renew it from their phone, and they can, they can pay their fees online if they choose to do that. But they get a lot of notification that they have something that's going to be due, where they can get it back on time or renew it.
How about that donation section? You had nothing, and I anticipate $6,000 in donations, is that? Promises or pledges, or what?
The library foundation has pledged to pay for the exhibit room coordinator's position. And this is kind of new revenue for us.
How does that change things as far as the general funds, that that $13,000 to $15,000 of overdue fees isn't going to the city anymore? Now, it's being allocated back to the library. Does that change anything from, I mean, what were we using that money for?
Well, it's going into the general coffers. I think this gives the library and the city some new opportunities, because the library, probably more so than any of our, well, maybe park and rec, has the ability to bring in some outside revenue that Public Works doesn't have, my office doesn't have. And I think our thought was, try to keep a hole this year, and then look, see how, how they're doing. I mean, they do a great job, a great asset. I was at a national conference in my profession, and so many cities, one of those number panels about how to get the library more involved in the, the aspect of the community and economic development, community development, I mean, we're, we're doing that, and they're very effective. And with the state statutes, they've got a lot of autonomy. And I think this gives them an opportunity to exercise that autonomy, and, and it gives them accountability, too. Because if, if they get more money in, then there's probably less pressure on the levy in future years. It's because it's just the nature of what they do.
And there used to be something called maintenance of effort. And the, the municipality could not fund the library at less than the average of the last three years. And that went away a couple of years ago. And I would hope that this body would still want to fund the, the library and not say, well, we want to cut you drastically now, because we don't have to. And I've seen the community support as being very strong for the library. We are a bargain, when you look at what the cost per circulation is, what the price per capita is, and I could certainly get you those numbers. But we also have really good aid through the county. And I think you want to remember that five years ago, we were not being funded at a hundred percent of what it costs to provide that service to the county. And it was a lot of lobbying on the part of librarians and our, out of the Wapaka Library System administrative staff to get that so it's fair, because the people who live outside of the city now pay that same amount that the people who live inside the city. It still costs more for inside the city, just because, because the levy is a little bit greater, but, and we pay for the building. But I do think that we've done a really good job of advocating for the need for library in our community and being a part of the community. Our plan is all about partnerships and, and making sure that everybody has access who needs access. You know, it was very hard for us a couple of years ago, when we needed to come up with $10,000, and the only way to do that in our situation is to look at, how can we cut ours and cut people? Because there's not a lot of other meat there. It's all about the service that we provide to the public. We have twenty-seven employees, and many of them, twenty of them, are part-time people who don't have benefits, who work sometimes at minimum wage or just a little bit more than that. But they are so dedicated to this organization that they give it their all. And I think we have some really great people working for us that really make this library a special place in the community and an exceptional library for the state.
Peg, is our current $373,000, let's say, is that the county, are they at a hundred percent?
Yes.
Okay, so they did get to the bottom?
Yes, they did. Now, Washere County by law has to reimburse, Wapaka County for the use by their rural residents. And they only have to reimburse that seventy percent of the cost. And that, when we, when, when we realized that Washere County was going to have to be held accountable, and I think that was five years ago, they started incrementally reaching that point where they were paying $70,000. So, the first year, they only paid $5,000, and then it went up from there, and now we're up to, as you can see, $18,000 from Washere County. Now, that is not money that we can count on forever. Washere County made...
The library will be closing in five minutes. Please ring your selection to the front desk for checkout. Thank you.
There's been a movement within the state to have systems combined, because ours is a small system. If we would combine with Winnefox system, there would be no obligation for Washere County to provide the same kind of revenue to Wapaka County. They could get, if they would be on our catalog, anybody who went to their library could access all of, all of the resources that are at the Wapaka Library and simply have them routed to their library. So, there is, there is a threat there with that. It would be a greater pool of library resources that we could offer our patrons, but that money isn't necessarily money that we can count on forever. I just wanted to point that out. And also, the librarians in Washere County are very upset that their patrons are crossing borders and using our resources here, because it does mean that the county looks very closely and say, why are, why are your people leaving the county? And the responses that they have more to offer in Wapaka. So, we have seen just a real small curbing of that this year with the advocacy on the part of the Washere County librarians. And I don't know, I think it maybe went from, from five percent to four percent, and then back up and down. So, we may see a little difference even next year with their advocacy efforts.
I have a more administrative question here, does any...
Yes.
Do you guys have a complete library budget worksheet in front of you? I don't think mine's complete, unless I'm looking at the wrong thing.
It says library fund budget worksheet, and then it's got two after that.
And it says library fund new?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I don't have anything in for 2016 department requests for expenditures. On the first page, but...
Oh, yeah.
The request, yeah.
The request is there. The request is the same as the year, as this year, unless there's an increase or a decrease on the side. And I apologize for that. I don't know how that happened. The, the spreadsheet I offered my library board today did have all of that in it.
Yeah, well, what?
The department request. So, the current budget is the department request, except for those, where you see an increase or decrease on the right. I, I apologize. I, I don't know how this even got here, so it's not what I shared with my board today.
Well, even if you...
I have it here, Mayor.
That's okay. I just, I would, I would certainly, you know, need to see that.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to see.
I have it here. I, I forward all of these to Kathy on the eighteenth, when they were due, and they were completed at that time. I'm not sure what's happening.
That doesn't add up.
There's a, there's a collection.
The request is seventy-four seven?
Why don't, you want me to go copy what you got? Do you have, what do you have, Peg?
The library is now closed. We will open tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. Have a late.
Yeah, that's, that's everything, I believe. That's what I, oh, and here's the...
Well, I wasn't...
No, you weren't. It's not there.
I was kind of wondering what she was requesting, because...
Well, why don't we, if you have a final one, Peg, why don't we, Henry made a copy of that?
That'd be great.
And why don't we just move on to the police department's budget? We'll come back to them, if you don't mind.
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. If that was the case, we're going to just hand out blank sheets next year, Paul, of your people, and just tell you what's under it. Okay, Chief, you are in the big packet, right? Is that somewhere in there?
Yes. It's got a worksheet, and it's got line items, followed by detailed information sheet on the backside of it. Well, start out with, keep in mind that the police department with actual powers, the commission did instruct me to include a one and a half percent pay increase for all staff, so that is in here. Of course, following the rule of the law, they can make recommendations, either approved or disapproved by council. But that is in there for my entire staff. The second largest increase, well, I guess I'll start with the $25,000 with the police patrol. A majority of that is step increases for the current contract. And we have several officers that are jumping from probationary status up to regular status. That's a four to $5 an hour increase, right there out of the box. So, those are things mandated by the contract that we have to comply with. And then beyond that probationary period, after so many years, they get another step increase, and then another step increase. There's like four step increases that have to be included in the budget per their contract. That, along with that one and a half percent increase, that alone is $25,000. The one and a half for police admin is $2,300. So, there's $27,300 of the total sixty-six that are, is wage-based. Now, some of it, we just can't avoid, the step increases. But like I said, the one and a half percent that no other agency had put in their budget, that is in mine for the direction of my actual powers, police commission. The next largest increase on a light item is going to be $20,000, and that's under police admin for miscellaneous leave, anticipated retirement. Now, we had been instructed in the past to try to anticipate potential retirements and try to get that in our budget. That's what this $20,000 is. Historically, we've never done that. And again, this is a potential anticipated retirement. Don't know if it's going to actually come through or not. But if it were to come through, that would be about a $20,000 payout of that person's accumulated benefits. You can look at that any way you want. I'm assuming that deposition would be filled right away, and that $20,000 would have to be paid and budgeted for. There's other options involved that we all are aware of, not filling the position, having an interim chief. Those are all things that can be debated down the road.
So, it's the chief's position that's thinking about retiring?
Could be anybody. This is on TV, I've been here twelve, fourteen hours here of interviews.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
What else is on here? There is six, seven, eight thousand two hundred that is to make up for previous revenue that we would normally get back in our budget, but due to some accounting changes, that is no longer coming back into our account. An example would be the sale of a squad car. We'd sell a car for four to $5,000. Historically, that would come back in that line item to offset setup on a new car and other maintenance issues. Now, that's not new money, it's just going somewhere else that I have to make up for in this budget. Another big one is the state training compensation, and that can be anywhere between $1,500 and $2,000. Historically, that would come back into our training fund, and we would expend that in a year for training. That's going out of my budget, still a revenue, but I have to make that up as an expense, an additional expense in that particular line item.
Chief, I'm sorry for interrupting you, but, so, what you're telling us is just the expenditure part of your budget, not the revenue part?
Right. It's actually an offset part, but it's not, that offset is not in my budget anymore. Before it was, now it's not. So, really, it's kind of a wash. That's $6,700 and $1,500. The next increase is $4,500 for contract services. Our RMS system is a very expensive program that we actually signed on with the county. We got a substantial discount when we purchased it, but they continually increase those contract fees from year to year, and I'm anticipating a kind of a big jump in that this year. And we're also looking at adding a LEEDs online investigative system, with that is $1,500 expense. We're looking at about a $3,000 for the contract service increase and a $1,500 expense for a new program, as that LEEDs online investigative tool that will be used by our investigators. The next item is $500, and that can be scratched. So, really, the bottom line is about $66,172 increase over last year's budget. And the salary increase, I'll back up, I kind of missed this with the police patrol. That also includes that additional six-month expense of that new officer that was approved last year. So, last year, when it was approved by council, we had six months budgeted in 2015, and so next year will be a full year. So, that's an additional six months that wasn't budgeted this year. And other than that, there is, there's nothing new, no new equipment. The only thing new that we're adding is that LEEDs online program. None of equipment or services or programs.
Henry, any thoughts on the, if we do have a retiree? And I think that number is, is something that we have to be thinking about, but that our past practice is not to budget for that. Yeah, it's been a policy not to fill the position until we recruit it. Now, the other option, I want Kathy to chime in, but we have drawn down a little bit of reserves this year, right, to pay those payouts, because of snowballing, and we want to get those positions filled. We're at, at least she said in our meeting today, at about maybe twenty percent of fund balance, adopted fund balance policy, says we have to be between fifteen and twenty-five percent of the general fund budget. And as Kathy looked at that, our percentage is probably inflated, because it was, it was, in the fund balance, you have more than just cash, so she wants us to just focus on cash. So, we're about eighteen, twenty percent cash. So, there could be a scenario where we would budget in the general fund, say, $50,000 of reserves, and those reserves would pay that one-time payout, right? I don't think you want to use reserves for ongoing operation. You want to use it for a one-time expense, something like this, or the TOM Act, once our board talks about it. You know, it's a one-time expense. In any kind of recruitment process, you're probably going to have, it depends on the position and what you're trying to do, but easily two to three months that you're going to have to advertise, interview, you know? So, the period of time to make, make that payout up is a little bit less than, you know, if you just ran a number on paper, because any kind of recruitment process is going to heat up sometime. So, we could probably refine the number a little bit, if you kept with the same policy, maybe, maybe, you know, assume a three-month process anyways, and maybe you just budget... So we could probably refine the number a little bit if you kept with the same policy, maybe, uh, maybe, you know, assume a three-month process anyways, maybe you just budget, you know, half of what you would otherwise, so you could get the position in a little bit earlier maybe. Or do a hybrid, maybe use a little bit of money from reserve to pay it out or something. I think, I think there's some things we can, we could do. But we're under these strict levy limits. It's just gonna be, I think, really impossible for the council in the near future to really change their policy that we've had and that we've been operating under. It's just, it's the way it is. And, um, I want to speak for the other department heads, but I think what happens is you don't see the day-to-day impact of not having that position on board, right? And you feel, you're not getting complaints, uh, but your department managers struggle to get that work out, uh, things get delayed, you know, because we just can't get people to them. So it is a real, it is a real service kind of problem when we don't fill a position like it probably works for eight or ten months or a cemetery for eight or ten months. So I think you have some options. I, I don't know that, we talked today, we probably have to get on this idea of kind of planning for retirements because our workforce is aging old in some departments.
Some of them are already retired.
Yes, maybe we're through the big.
I think you're behind the.
Well, maybe try to plan that out a little bit more on paper, kind of see where we're at. Um, you know, a lot of the, the talk in the management field is you, you focus on your personnel that you have now and you know you got a retirement in five years. Will you invest in that person, right, to bring them up to speed, get them what they need so they, you know, could progress into a, you know, higher position? So, um, I think, I, I think you have the ability to maybe draw down some reserves to do payouts this year, but I, I, you know, I just, it's, that's not the long-term solution, I think.
Tim, uh, your budget has usually included a vehicle in there? You didn't touch on that. Does it include a vehicle?
Yes, it does, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's no different as far as purchasing a new vehicle?
No, no. We just don't have anything. Every three years or so, we do have to buy an extra car and that's usually under the capital borrow.
And we just did it in fifteen?
Right, yeah.
I think we talked today about mayor and council, a way to maybe fund that, get the car, but not pay cash for it necessarily. Kathy can explain. It's a little bit of a, right, because we can exceed levy limits for debt and maybe do a one-year lease. And that could, she can account for that as debt, so we can exceed the levy limit for that. And, and he gets the car, but we're not, our budget isn't hit for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well, how about next year when you got another new vehicle?
Yeah, I don't want to, to be honest, I don't want to fight that, fight again. We went through that buildup process for five years and we're not gonna give that up. I talked to my commission and they're not willing to give that, that up.
So, uh, if it, if the vehicle is a capital expenditure, then the council approves that? If it's within his general budget, then the police and fire commission decides?
You, I think you give them a number and they, they have total control of whatever that number is.
But capital is not included within that.
They do not have the authority to borrow. So either it's paid for and I pay as you go, which is a number, and you give them the number and they manage the number, or if it's a borrowed item, you have to prove it.
Remember how hard we worked? I think Steve was a very big proponent of pay as you go and that's how we got around to that, finally, eventually getting that in that budget.
Well, most of us look at our vehicles as being long-term, but we're replacing a vehicle each year, so it's, in essence, we're using up one vehicle each year and that's why it was put into the budget.
Yeah, we keep a patrol unit on the road for three years and then there are ninety thousand miles and then get traded in.
And that's where you find the best value for that car too, is at that ninety?
We worked that out, so we're not paying a lease fee, we're not paying a loan, um, we're paying cash for that vehicle and then in three years, we're getting like, what, we get five thousand dollars, I think, for a trade-in this year. Do you remember Steve? I brought that forward. It was a very, very good price for trading. And once you get over a hundred thousand, you can just write it off. But if you can get it in there, if you lower a hundred, it can be ninety-eight and we're gonna get a great value on trade-in. But once you get that six-figure marks, uh, used squad car, especially from the city as opposed to from sheriff's office, they're really not worth much. So we, we put a lot of work in it, finding, fine tuning how to get that in there.
Any other questions on the, uh, police? As far as the wages are concerned, you remember he said that there's a percent and a half in there. We do have negotiations tomorrow with the union.
We do?
We do.
Well, Alan and Paul, right?
Yeah, and they, you, you certainly can sit in this guy if you want to. We're right after city planning commission, so it's about six fifteen if you'd like to.
Oh, I, I.
It's up to you. Certainly. You volunteered when that mayor asked?
I thought I did, I.
I apologize if you, yeah.
I guess.
Before we leave, I'll give you their proposals, yeah. In our counter. So we haven't even talked about the other employees in the city, so to necessarily talk about the wage increase that the police are asking for, I appreciate you pointing that out to us, Chief, but it's, it's probably not something that, uh, is appropriate at this time until we actually talk about the other employees in the, in the city too. Kathy, you've had a chance to, Henry said you had an idea on the car. I guess I'd like to hear it.
One of the options that we could do in, in, to get around the levy limit law is to go in, into a one-year capital lease. So in essence, what it does is, it still allows you to pay cash for it. It's just that it's a one-year lease and you get to levy for it then as part of debt service. So it's not like I'm, I, I think the best analogy is, is in the village of Greendale needed to buy a new radio system for the police department, which was a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Well, they were maxed out on their levy, but didn't want to borrow for it. So what the village did was they did a one-year equipment lease with a dollar buyback from Motorola so that as of, uh, January, February, they, once the levy was set and the tax bills were out and tax collection came in, we, we paid the whole, in, um, the whole financing and, um, it cost us seventeen hundred dollars on a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So if you are looking at still paying cash for it, but getting around the levy limit law, because you're allowed to do debt service and a capital lease is considered under the statutes, a, um, debt service, then you could put that squad car, uh, on a one-year capital lease. We could easily get it through one of the banks here, um, or some of the, you know, some other bank and, and, and still pay, build it into the debt service levy and, and pay, and pay cash.
So if you put it into debt service, you either have to pay with it with a loan, a capital loan, or you would have to pay for it with taxes. So in essence, you're suggesting then that if we do that, we'd either have to borrow money or we'd have to raise taxes?
Right. Well, what we would do is we could fit it in within the debt service levy, the, the cost of the, the squad and the, the amount of interest that would be for that, for that one-year capital lease. So we would pay for it, um, before the end of the year and buy it down and, and pay off the lease. I mean, it'd be just one payment. It isn't that you're gonna lease it over three years of it, but you would go in and, and, and pretty much just buy it on credit and pay the, the small amount that you're gonna have for that, that, that lease agreement with the bank.
I, I get what you're saying because you're paying it off in one year, so it's the same thing as buying it. My issue here, of course, is how do we pay for it?
You would, you would be able to bring it in under your debt service levy. Now, under the levy limit law, we.
I'm not talking levy limits here. Are, would we have to raise taxes or borrow money to, to fund that vehicle under your scenario?
Well, we would, we use it with tax levy.
So the answer is yes. We would have to increase tax levy or we would have to decrease expenditures somewhere else?
Right.
Okay. So there's a way around it, but it's still gonna cost us?
Yeah, you're still gonna have to buy, if you're gonna buy a car, it's still gonna cost you.
So if we're willing to increase taxes to help balance this budget, that would be one way of doing it.
The, the scenario I was looking at is the fact that the debt service levy is going down because we did prepay, we are prepaying in November the ninety thousand dollar coupon that was built in this year's budget in this levy. So you don't have next year that ninety thousand dollars plus interest costs of levy that you would normally have. The amount that we have for the trust fund loan isn't that much as the ninety thousand, so we're still ahead that we could fit it without having a levy increase for debt service, that it would just stay the same.
And that would be okay for two thousand sixteen?
Right.
But.
Two thousand seventeen, we'd have to look and see whether or not we'd have the levy capacity to be able to increase it.
So there is a way that for two thousand sixteen that we could do this and not affect property taxes?
Correct.
Okay.
What's the finance charge then on a twenty-five thousand dollar car for a year?
Well, if it was a hun- seventeen hundred for eight, hundred and eighty-five thousand, depending on who I get it from, I can probably get it for less than three percent. You know, and depending on when we pay it, you're talking a couple hundred bucks. Yeah.
Did you say that at the end of that one-year lease?
You could do it at the end of the, you know, we wanted to, we could buy it in, in January, you know?
At the end of the one-year lease, we'd be buying out the lease at a buck like similar, so we'd have the vehicle at the end of the, it's just a different financing mechanism.
To get around the levy law.
Understood.
See, I think once we consolidate, I think the next time we get together, we're gonna know kind of where that levy sits, right? Where, what the property tax impact is gonna be.
So what's, what's the definition of, uh, of debt then? I mean, if you borrow fifty thousand dollars for six months, it doesn't, that doesn't.
I'm buying a piece of capital equipment.
It doesn't matter.
It's over my threshold of capitalization with this five thousand.
And it has to be more than twelve months?
Nope. What I can have is, the other one would be is, is that we had, uh, the other one was, it was, um, it was a one-year lease, but it was a, uh, no prepayment, um, prepayment. So you, no penalty prepayment on that. So we could easily get, if I can work it with one of the banks, that would be something that we would do. So there, even though, um, it might be a one-year lease or even a, a three-year lease, but I can pay it with, like we do the state trust fund loan with no, there's no call provision, so we'll, we can do that.
Other questions, comments on the police department budget? Somebody, Chief, you have anything else? Thank you. Let's go back then to the library.
I have the whole story. Not just part of the story. And, and I'm sure, I, I understand how that happened because when Kathy and I started talking about the fund, we also started talking about changing the line items to be in a way that it would make it easier for us to, for me, to report on the annual report. So we moved things around according to how the annual report wants things, um, placed. So we put all of the AV in one area and we put all of the print materials in another and we separated the part-time and full-time benefits and wages. So we did a lot of shuffling around and it was the last worksheet on a, an Excel spreadsheet that had like six of them and Kathy's working with twenty different departments. So, um, I apologize and, and we can get back to this and it's gonna make more sense now since you're looking at the whole picture. So when we look at, uh.
Are we looking at the one that's got the yellow on it? Is that?
Yeah, just expenses. I think the revenue sheet, that top sheet for the previous package.
It's good. It's good, yeah. So we've looked at the revenue. Now, when we look at the expenditures, you can see our department request for two thousand sixteen and a few changes. The full-time benefits for social, are all of the benefits for social security were under one social security line item instead of being separated out for part-time and full-time. And by taking that out and just adding it into the part-time benefits, it doesn't change the bottom line. The other thing is that, um, the health insurance deductible was, is used to pay for our health, our wellness coach and, um, rather than have that in there and then have it pulled out like that, I, I thought it might be nice to know what the costs are for our wellness coach for our department. Um, so that was moved around a little bit as well. We see the six thousand dollars that is, um, revenue from our library foundation to help offset the costs of our part-time wages. We have struggled in the last five years to be within budget. We've had so many full-time people who've had surgeries and have been out for sick leave and we need to fill in with part-time people. We can't be down a full-time person all the time. And so we have been over budgeted and have compensated in other ways within that. So we really feel that's gonna help us with, with some of the problems that we've seen. So that's where that six thousand dollars comes in. Now, the building personnel was not an expense that you would have seen in the library fund in the past because we weren't, we weren't looking at that. It was a part that I would have reported to the state as part of our expenditures, but it wasn't in the library fund. It was actually in the public works or the building fund. So now it's been placed here and it does increase the amount of the budget by about a hundred and five thousand dollars. Now, knowing that our revenues for the county aid have changed for the year, we found places where we could make changes, um, in order to make sure that our bottom line didn't change for this, for the levy. And we were fortunate enough that the OWLS contract came in less than it did last year. And so we were able to not actually cut there, but we don't need as much money, so there was money, less money put into that line item. Um, promotional materials, we're going to try as much as we can to use free online services or less, less expensive promotional opportunities that are available for libraries to make those promotions. Our technologies and computers, we took, we carved out a little bit there. Our ebooks, uh, which are the downloadable resources that we provide for the state. Each library is billed, um, for amount, uh, based on your circulation and your population. Um, and that amount was, uh, three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars last year and it went up seventy-five dollars this year. Even with that increase, our cost for circulation for a downloadable ebook or audiobook is about thirty cents, so it's a good bargain for us. I really thought it was gonna go up another two hundred because the state has now added magazines that you can download and that we, we were looking at a cost of about twenty dollars, two hundred dollars per library and they, um, the consortium really decided that they would take on. per library. And they, the consortium really decided that they would take on that and, and cut in other areas. So that, that saved us a little bit. Our library supplies, we're really hoping to streamline our processing, processing of materials. We wanna cut out some of the labeling, possibly take some, some other way that we're processing materials. Maybe use less tape, use less book, book cover. And that's where we hope to find that seven hundred and fifty dollars. And then when we look at that last page, what you're looking at now are materials costs. And it's nice to be able to say, these are the print materials that we provide for our library patrons and these are the audiovisual materials. Before, there were, there were a mix. So that when we looked at our, our line item for books, we also had music and audiobooks in there. And those we considered audiovisual by the state standards. And so now we've pulled those out and put them in a way that the state will, it, it'll just be a matter of recording a number that's already in our budget. So it's going to make it easier to do the annual report. We did move a little bit around. Children's music is probably going by the wayside a little bit. And we've moved that to video games. So there's been a little shuffling around as well. We're hoping that there's somebody in the community who wants to fund either magazines or newspapers. You know, our daily newspapers have gone up in cost. And we're hoping that maybe somebody will come forward and fund those. Otherwise, we will find some economies there within that line item. And that's the more complete picture of what we're talking about when we're talking about the library. I appreciate the work that Kathy has done with us to, to make this a fund. And we worked with Russ Montgomery and Justin to figure out what those building costs were. And it's a formula I've been using for reporting on the annual report for the last seven years. So it's, it's not anything new. It's the same numbers we've been providing to the state in the past. It's just moving them from one area of the budget to the library fund.
Do you have any questions or comments? Okay, Peg, here's the big question. You've probably waited to hear this. In your budget at this time, does your budget include any pay increases?
No, it does not. There are no pay increases.
And there won't be any requests in December for a pay increase?
No, there will not.
Thank you. This is a complete, I know that, I mean, they're, correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy and Henry, but they are very similar to the police department in that they're giving us the itemized list, but they can choose how they expend their money.
Correct.
So thank you for detailing that for us.
The library board did approve this budget after meeting the Stevens. Trust fund approved library budget.
Remind me again, you said this was a zero percent increase?
That's correct. There is no levy change.
So is that number the three fifty-one, four fifty-four, Peg?
It's the-
Would you request it from the city?
Four fifty-six, seven fifty-nine includes the building.
Oh, okay. All right.
So it's, the change is because of the building added on to it. But otherwise, it's the same as last year.
So the building will be subtracted from somewhere else? Okay. Anybody else have any questions? All right. Do we need another break? Okay. Uh, let's- If we do have another break, I'm gonna say, let's have a one-minute break so we can get back by ten minutes. All right. Uh, let's move on then to the utility budget presentations. And I'll just take them right in the order that they are. Justin, you're doing this, obviously, right? The water budget with the sheer help of Kathy here and Henry. But, and which one is that in our-
I just handed it out. It says, um, water-
Water utility at the very top in the middle?
Water utility.
There we are.
Yeah, it's fairly thick.
It's staple.
All right.
I hate to say, let me, let me say something here because Paul and I have actually said this already. But you know what was really helpful that our former treasurer did, and I know you probably don't like to hear this, but she color coordinated the different departments. And that helped me.
Yeah.
The pages and stuff like that. So just, next year.
Next year.
No start over? All right, go ahead, Peg.
Yeah, this is, just got this updated from Kathy. So feel free to interject whenever I mess up or whatever. So basically from last year, we're gonna try and keep everything the same between revenues and going out. The one big, I guess, revenue you can see on the front page is what we're trying to get for our safe drinking water loan, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And I brought to council four hundred and thirty for the water main loop. We discussed afterwards, we have to do some well rehabs. We got two of our municipal wells that need to be rehabilitated. It's a ten-year cycle. It's a, it's a, just a normal process to keep our wells functioning properly. So that's an extra forty thousand. We may be able to put that in there with that loan. So that's where I'm guessing this four seventy comes from. Otherwise, we'd have to, to fund that ourselves, the forty thousand dollars. So moving on to the second page, if you will, I just glanced at this a moment before, but it looks like pretty much everything's staying the same with the exception of the residential fees. That's correct, Kathy?
I, I, we will probably be going for a simplified rate case. But depending on the construction authorization for the loops, that may force us to do a full rate case. But that's what the engineering firm is, is used for to determine whether or not, and the PSC telling us what we can do and can't do as far as the rates. So the, I, I kept the rates the same, only from the simple fact is when you get to the bottom line for the utility, it doesn't not, it does not have that three to six percent net income. So you're only seeing five thousand based on keeping the rates the same. So we may need to increase the rates with this, you know, going forward. But we'll have a better picture once we know from the construction authorization on the loops. So.
Question? Kathy, I have a question. The council could adopt a budget with no rate increase. And then will that be on February, maybe? Or will we know before January one on the construction authorization?
Yeah.
Will it be before then?
Construction authorizations don't take that long. I'd say they take like two or three months, depending on their, their, the PSC's workload. So we could easily go and, and, and adopt the budget the way it is and still come back and say, based on the construction authorization, the PSC is recommending that we do a simplified rate case and, and, and go for the, the rate case.
When was our glass water increase?
I believe Tina said it was two thousand and nine. So it's been a while. And usually with, a lot of the water utilities will do simplified rate cases on yearly to biannual basis to, just to keep the utility in line with the ground. And you have to raise your rates fifty-four percent or more. There's a lot of water utilities that have done that. And so you wanna make sure that you, you don't shock the rate payers and just try and keep everything nice and steady. And that's where those simplified rate cases really come in handy. Just giving it, it's a three percent. And it's not on your fixed costs. So it's not on your, your, the fixed cost of your bill. It's really on the volumetric charge is what the utility is going to get that, that increase for. So that, that's one of the things that in my past experience that have, that have happened. And so somebody who says, you know, I'm getting a three percent rate increase, and you find out they, their volumetric that they pay every month is sixteen dollars, so figure three percent on sixteen dollars. So it's not that big of an increase. It's not three percent on the bottom of the bill. So that's one of the educational things that we would do with the rate case.
Remember?
Hey, I guess, I know I've asked Justin before and Henry, does this, does the revenue for the safe water drinking, we also have another potential loop out there, and that's the Bethany home. Have we gotten confirmation on who's paying that cost? That was part of that pro, John negotiated that before he left?
I think that was in, in, I think that's ours. I don't remember that. I didn't, I didn't understand it to be, again, I don't know, it wasn't a big project.
Well, I still need to follow up with the Bethany, you know, the people involved with that. But talking with Mark, he's saying that that was gonna be covered by the development. Mark Noember, the water superintendent.
Even though it's in, it's in our right of way?
Yeah. Because their building is already set on top of an existing water main. So that has to be relocated. So.
When we do our final permit issue, we can deal with all that, right?
I think it might be at the end of the year, but you might wanna know beforehand if you have to prioritize what looping projects you're gonna do. Again, I believe that if I remember correctly, it's more knowledge for Justin because he wasn't here. But, you know, yes, they're placed on top of the building, but we're also replacing that, a portion of our water main in Shadow Lake Drive, which that would be our cost.
Kathy, I'm changing a little bit here. On the expenditures pages, which I'm assuming starts on page three of this table. On the very top line, it says depreciation and taxes. And that's a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars more.
That's based on the assets, the one, the auditors doing the hiring.
Oh, this is what we need to put away. Okay.
This is our depreciation.
So we have to fund depreciation. So we have to put this into a savings account. And we have not been doing that. We didn't do it last year. We haven't done it for a few years. But that was one of the, yeah. So this is adding to our cash balance within our water fund.
Correct.
Depreciation. That's right. I forgot about that. Okay. I mean, I guess in essence, if our budget was to work out for two thousand fifteen, it, it was showing a profit of about a hundred and twenty thousand. That would've went into that reserve account anyways.
Right.
So we're just putting in what we're supposed to.
But I, I, I've, just, just to help everybody out, and the mayor will understand what I'm saying, is I'm doing the utilities as if they're governmental funds. So you're seeing their revenues and you're seeing their expenditures. They're not really being budgeted like they're presented in our financial statements or to the PSC, which is on a accrual basis. The depreciation would be below the line. It'd be noncash. It, you know, it's a bunch of other accounting stuff. But I, I just wanna show in the, in the fund exactly what the expenses are and that you're covering your costs with your revenues. Only because this fund is generate, it only can operate with the, with the fees that it gets for providing the service. So until, until you see the financial statements and the auditors do, and I do some moving these numbers around on a, on a page, I just wanted to make sure that everybody got it. So that I'm not trying to present something different. So all of the funds are presented as if they're all governmental funds. And, and it just helps you to understand that this is revenue and these are your expenditures.
Yeah, one other question. Thank you for that. And I had forgotten about that part. But on the bottom of page three, it does show the net revenue over expenses. So I am to assume then that even if we don't have a water rate increase, we're still budgeting a small profit.
Right. But the PSC requires you to have anywhere between a three and a six percent rate of return. So, you know, we're, we're getting to that point where five thousand dollars isn't, isn't what we're supposed to be putting away to be able to, one, work with paying cash for, for the services and to put, to continue to put money aside for some of the, not the bigger infrastructure, but the smaller stuff that you have to, to maintain in the, in the utility.
So if we can get back to, I guess, the page three here, just kinda go down the line and explain the overages and unders beyond that. We have, just below the depreciation and taxes with an eight thousand dollar decrease and, and the maintenance of wells and wells, I think that's an error. We'll have to really look at that one. Beyond that, that two thousand extra for the maintenance and supplies is additional money we'll need during our valve exercising. It's a program, we're supposed to exercise our valves every three to five years. We've been slacking and we need to get caught back up again so we don't get in trouble, the DNR. So we're expecting that as we exercise more valves, we will be breaking more valves. To try and compensate that, fuel for power, we've, as you can see, for the past years, we don't quite hit our numbers. So we're just saying we don't need to ask for as much money. Some savings there. Kinda the same thing with that negative three hundred by the maintenance of structures, just some cleaning up of line items, some money we don't necessarily need. The fifteen thousand for the storage facilities, that's our water towers, we need to clean and televise. I believe it's the Mount Tom water tower. Again, it's another DNR requirement. But again, you'll have to hire some, somebody to do that. That's roughly fifteen thousand dollars. The next one down is an extra ten thousand dollars. That's for a leak location study. That's something that has been set in place prior years. And it's just, the cost of those studies has just warrant additional money. It is an important thing to locate where our leaks are and try to reduce our, our losses. Become more efficient with our distribution. A hundred for the meter reading is again, just kinda cleaning up lot, items. Records and collections, looking into that, I'm not really sure why we are asking for another five thousand, but it looks like something with wages and-
It's for the software.
Oh, the Orion software?
No, for your financial software. You have maintenance for the MOM software. So there's, there's that in, that in there.
Okay. Outside services, we are asking for a little, no, office supplies and expenses. We're asking for a little bit- asking for a little bit more. We've seen higher, I guess, communication costs with our phone rates. And then it's just because we are doing a lot more with coordinating work with professional services to say with the cleanings, the hour study, or the leak studies. And underneath it, that five thousand is for a cross connectional control program. Again, that's contracted out and the bills each year come in slightly higher. And then the capital outlay, as you can see, that four hundred and seventy, as I mentioned before, that looping project is going to be roughly four hundred and thirty thousand. To rehab our wells, our two wells will be about forty thousand. That is pretty much it summarized. Got to look into these things a little bit closer though as well and come up with something more final and concrete by next week.
Where's our debt set with the water? Do we have anything that's falling off soon or anything that's increasing soon? Do you know?
No, the debt on the water utility is going down. I believe there was one, one issue that just got, that'll be paid off in sixteen. So I think there's one issue that's, that's done. That, we'll be bringing that information at the next meeting on the debt service and the TIF districts. You will get budgets this year for all of your TIF districts so you will understand where they are.
I was just specifically asking for the water.
Yeah, I'd have to look at it.
That's okay. Let me ask you this question. Again, when I say these things, I'm not necessarily recommending these, so don't get up in arms people. But let's say that we borrow, instead of borrowing the three ninety-five, we borrow the full amount of four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Would that stop us from having to worry about our water rate increase for two thousand and sixteen?
It would have to be if the, if the PSC tells us that we have to raise our rate to, to cover the debt service. And it might not be that this year's the year that we do it and that, because depending on when the payments fall for the safe drinking water loan, we can probably get it that it's the following year.
Well, I'm just thinking two of our debt is dropping off. Maybe we can get away with.
That might be something that, you know, it's, it's not that big of a deal, but...
Okay. Other questions or comments? People think I'm talking to them. Tell me to shut up, okay? Otherwise, we'll keep going here. All right. Anything else for the water department? Justin?
Should pretty much wrap it up.
Okay. Let's, I had to shut my computer down, but I think sewer was next, right?
Yes.
And we've got, it should be up there. I just can't hit it.
Yeah, there's nothing on the top of this one.
It doesn't. It's the next page. I forgot to put a computer on. It should be stapled.
Customer penalties on the top.
But I was with six twenty sewer charges.
Hard to talk if you don't have one of them. So it starts with the six two zero.
Yeah, customer penalties.
All right.
Okay. Well, I just got it too, the updated one.
Yeah, I added some changes with the debt service.
Do you want to go through that then?
Sure.
Just going to do that. I'll review the, the rest of it.
This is good. For the revenues in the, I, I've reduced the revenues. I think the revenues on the sewer have been overstated. If you look at the trending, you've, you've budgeted over two million in revenues and you've only collected a million eight. So you definitely have almost a four hundred thousand dollar swing based on your, your revenues. So I've, I've, I've trended them so that they look more reasonable, more conservative. The other one is, then on the next page, if you go to the expenditures, you'll see that I have changed debt service costs because, I'm not quite sure, because we had five hundred thousand dollars in other, well, that's in depreciation. So we have five hundred thousand dollars in depreciation and taxes. And then we have five, I took out five hundred thousand dollars in, in debt service costs. Now, we hadn't planned on having that much debt to, need to, to go out there. There's a debt reserve already set up for the sewer fund. So that may change once I finish looking at the TIF districts as to whether or not some of that debt can be back absorbed by them instead of the sewer fund. But otherwise, I'm, I'm looking that there's still a shortfall in, in the expenditures. And none of it is really, I think, just, Justin's operating is pretty much flat. The only difference is the five hundred thousand that's in that one account that Jean has set up for depreciation and that wasn't before. And the other one is the debt.
Is that what the other general?
Yeah. And, and, and that might be some of the tweaking that we have with formatting. I'm, I'm in a learning experience with these accounts this year in trying to understand how you've done the accounting in the past because it's not what I'm used to. So I'm trying to understand where everything is and why it's there. That's what's taken a little bit longer. But there was, there wasn't enough budgeted. If you look in previous years, if it was, this year was budgeted at three thirteen. Why has the auditors booked seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars to it? So I think that some of that is, is just accounting fixing and that's why we just kind of left it the way it is. But there is going to be a shortfall because I have reduced revenues. And that might be one of those things where we look at it and it's not a, it's not a water rate increase. It might be a sewer rate increase. And it's got to do with, with the fact that the revenues just aren't being generated by the, by the users. And, and that can be because of, you know, water conservation. This sewer treatment plant is older. It's a very expensive plant to operate. It has a lot of maintenance issues, you know, just from being used. So I think the cost of it is, is one of those that are detrimental, that you're always going to see the rates have to be increased almost on a biannual basis just to keep up with the need to maintain your, your, maintain your equipment. But also, on the other hand, you have conservation that's hurting you because you don't, your rates are based on how much people use in water. And so you're not getting that revenue that you've had in the past. And a lot of it has to do with conservation. So I would have to try and figure out why the revenues were set so high.
Well, we did lose one of our top customers in Chur Jersey. Yeah. I mean, they were probably our top customer.
And you never adjusted your revenues for, for that?
Yeah. That's probably the biggest reason.
So, and I know, listening to the, the foundry, that they're looking at being more conservation with some more water usage and, and that. So, you know, there's, that could be some more impact on, on your rates. But, but if they're not, if they're using, if they're bringing in the water and they're not sending it to the treatment and they have a different setup, then that could be the, the difference too. So, so I just, like I said, I just adjusted the revenues based on trending, not so much knowing more. But that's usually when, with user fees, that's usually why, when you start trend, you start using trends based on usages. But that's pretty much what we have. But we didn't have any bigger capital outlays on the sewer. Or did, or were we gonna?
We have some projects coming up we'd like to do.
Well, we, I think in the past, you've always had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in projects that you're doing, but you used, you used your money. You used your cash, your equipment, your, your, your replacement fund that you're putting money aside for as long as your rates are, are there, you know. The prior years, you have, you know, put three hundred and six thousand, four hundred and forty thousand, you know. It's one of those things where you look at the budget versus what you're put, you know, what your actuals are and you're finding that, yeah, I might be saying that you, you're going to have two hundred and fifteen, but, you know, your expenses are based on also your usage and you don't have, must not have it. And it's, and it's still coming in with, with money to set aside. So...
Any kind of, this is probably a hard number for you to give us, but I mean, you're, you're projecting about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar loss in the sewer fund. What does that equate into a rate increase?
I would say, you, you know, if you wanted to, you could probably look at a three percent. But it's, it's one of those things where you're required in the sewer utility to put aside money for replacement and you have to have, that's your C MOM charges that you need to have so much set aside and reserves for the DNR permit. So one of those, you know, you might be, might be good with maybe just a small one percent increase. You know, if you're looking at your revenues of one point six million, you, you could easily probably get away with just a one percent increase and just come out flat. But then again, you know, we can, we could, Justin and I probably have to talk a little bit more.
I guess we could just ask our customers to flush a little more.
Yeah, we'll use some more water. So...
By energy efficiency goals.
Yeah.
Didn't we just have, in the last few years, some sewer increases, didn't we? I remember passing.
Yeah, we were proposing, I think, two years ago, a two percent. I think council adopted one.
Okay, I know we did.
I think it was two years ago. I mean, time flies. We'll check it before you adopt the budget. But it's been two years or maybe three.
Didn't seem like it was that long, but you might be right. John is telling us the reason.
And usually it is because you, you've got more conservation, but your plant is older, so it's, it's very costly to operate.
Now, some of the things we are doing is the, the pumps retrofit is going to use a lot less power. What's our power? It's pretty big. Seventy-five thousand, well. I know they've worked on some energy efficiency things. And we did, we do have a fellow we're working with who's had a whole audit of the city. It's been a long process, but we're hoping to bring a conclusion by the end of the year on some other energy efficiency opportunities. I mean, we've done a lot through the years, but I think there's some other, some other projects out there potentially. Justin, did you want to go through any of the expenditures that stuck out or anything?
Well, I guess part of the capital we have coming up is, like Henry mentioned, looking to get new blowers, irrigation blowers, new flight pumps. I mean, those are just newer pumps processes in the, in the plant that, that would run more efficient. They're more size appropriate. What we have typically now is something that you turn on, you turn off. It's very, not very much variability in the speed, so they're inefficient. So those would be the, the big, the big things within our capital. We're looking at corrosion control within our lift stations. And basically, that's just the improve or extend the life of, of all of our lift stations. If we can do that to all five of them, we're hoping we can get an extra twenty, thirty years out of each one of them per se. As far as, I guess, if you really want to look at each line item, we're asking for less heat at the plant, just historically, we haven't used as much. We're asking for more for professional services and supplies. That correlates with our WPDS permit with the DNR and some of the testing requirements that are coming up for two thousand and sixteen. And another slight increase is just the maintenance of facilities. Again, the, the whole facility's just getting kind of old. It just requires a little bit more tender loving care and a little bit more money to, to keep everything on the up and up. So in general, really, the whole budget is pretty stable as Kathy has right now and just a kind of a slight increase with, with just the maintenance and additional testing requirements. So that's pretty much it.
So at this time, you really haven't formulated whether there needs to be a sewer rate increase or not?
No, I want to, I want to ask, if anything, either ask the auditors some questions on, on some of their, their entries that they've done in the past to see where they are and, and to really look at what, what the debt service is for the sewer fund and, and make sure that, that covered, that gets covered. So...
Kathy, do you feel we need a little more time than a week to get at that?
Well...
Because we're taxed, we're taxed, tasked and to try to get this to council for approval next week.
I, I would appreciate more time. My husband's going through his fourth chemo treatment tomorrow, so I'm going to be traveling. So it's going to, it's going to be a little bit hard to, to move some of these numbers again. You'll only get the updated sheets. So if you want to hang on to these and put them in a folder, that's fine. But you'll, that's all you'll get is, and those will be colored. So, but, you know, I, I think if we could hold off until after this next council meeting, that would be great. And give me until like the week after, that would be...
They give us some time to do some more work on the water fund. So if that's appropriate, we could just plan on November third then to take these budgets. Yeah. It, it makes sense to do them all at once, probably, unless you, you know, just gets it done. Well, the water and the sewer fund, we certainly should do it together.
Well, you also have online to...
Well, I know, yeah. But I, we'll see what happens. He's next up here. So, Henry, you're suggesting then that we just skip next week's regular council meeting and go to the third, which is our regular scheduled meeting. Okay.
Yeah, I'm thinking too.
Yeah, no, there's this council meeting next week. Yeah, that was a good try. Yeah, that was a good try.
Yeah, well, that's good, that gives us three weeks.
I, um, I know you had somewhere, and we'll let Josh go to the online thing, but I think you had a suggestion of November tenth, Henry, for maybe a, a meeting, and I'm not available the tenth, so, I don't know about the rest of the people, but I'm just voicing my.
Well, could I ask Kathy a question?
I'd like to have you there.
Um, should we, now, God, the special meetings, we, you know, the twenty-seventh, is there something going, that brings a bell, something's going on?
Just in the afternoon, you gotta.
Just the afternoon, we have, uh, the TIP analysis.
But we could maybe have another, would it be a workshop mayor, or, I, I'm not sure, are you at a point where you wanna make some decisions?
Henry, I got, I won't be there, because I got the downtown parking study.
Oh, that's what's sticking in my mind.
Well, if we do the water and the sewer on the twenty-seventh, we could do that, right?
You wanna have a, you wanna have a special meeting then, and knock those out?
You could have, you could have all the other funds on the twenty-seventh then, you know, you, I'd go, I'll give you the, um, the debt service fund and go over the, the TIP funds and, you know, finalize the airport by that time, when's the airport board meeting again? So then, you know, you'll have the, the airport finalized, so you can have all the other funds, outside funds, um, finalized, and, and we can have, at that point, um, a summary as to all of the funds across the board and what the impact is on the tax levy. By that time, we'll have, um, we should have, uh, the manufacturing numbers and from the state.
Yeah, so we could have the meeting, adopt the utility budgets, and then go into the other funds.
So we could do both, we could do a council meeting and a committee of the whole, or just stay as a council meeting?
Because then maybe ready to make some decisions, once you see all of it.
Well, again, Brennan said he's not gonna be there, right?
I, I, I'm not speaking for the council, but that downtown, that's the first listed session for parking studies, so I'm not sure if there's any interest from any council members to be at that meeting either.
What time is the list session?
That's gonna start at five-thirty until seven, eight o'clock.
Well, let's, let's talk about it. Is there anybody besides Brennan that cannot make it on the twenty-seventh?
Possibly not, I gotta have another meeting.
Okay.
Depends on what time you do.
Yeah, I mean, this is unusual to have a fifth. Tuesday, Tuesday, it doesn't have to be on a Tuesday either, right? Could be on the Monday, right, the twenty-sixth or whatever.
The Monday, the twenty-sixth, we could do.
Anybody have any issues there on the twenty-sixth?
Just have to go through that, redo.
Fire, is the fireman?
I got the review of the oral appeals.
Yeah, but that won't take long.
We start at five-thirty? We start at like five-thirty, the train could be about forty-five.
But Chuck will not be able to be here on the, on the twenty.
Is that, is that Monday?
Yes.
Maybe only Monday we have off.
Well, not anymore. Well, well, Henry, why don't we send out an email and let people respond to that email? That's probably the easiest way. And we could go right to the Thursday, just have a, a humongo meeting on the third, if you want to, and hopefully everybody will be okay with that. I kinda like the idea of, uh, of Kathy being able to present the information to us before we actually have to make that decision the same day, so.
Yeah.
Somewhere along the line, we need to have a presentation first, and then, and then give us a week or two to.
I agree with you, Justin.
Yeah.
We'll do the utility budgets and then go into the other funds.
Yeah.
So you wanna do that on Thursday?
No, uh, we're doing it twenty-sixth.
On the twenty-sixth.
And I'll set the meeting, we could set it, I guess we could set, we can set it at six o'clock, so the Board of Adjustment Appeals issues take care of it. Would, would you have your firemen? Do you have difficulty?
Yeah, it's a four.
Yeah, it isn't the fifth, it's only.
No, it's a four, yeah.
How about, uh?
Wednesday?
How about Wednesday, the twenty-eighth?
Okay, I don't know.
Wednesday, the twenty-eighth. All right, let's try for the.
Okay, twenty-eight?
Yeah.
How about that?
Let's try the twenty-eighth. All right, uh, anything else on the water and sewer fund? Anybody? Let's, uh, move on to, uh, we'll pack a online, right?
That was one that was distributed earlier, right, Kathy?
Yep.
Subscribe around.
Kinda looks like this, huh? Two gray lines.
Oh, here we go.
So who's gonna film Josh?
Lower the podium.
The number six fifty?
Yes, subscriber residence.
Turn your camera and stand in front of it, Josh.
I gotta get out of the camera.
Okay, just a little background, where we've been this year and where I see us going next year, um, this, by the end of this year, we'll complete about half of our PSC broadband grant project, which is upgrading our entire backhaul of our network, and this is allowing us to get more speed to our customers and just overall getting things just up to date where they should be, and a little bit of future proofing. Um, this year, we've reached that settlement agreement with AT&amp;T, and that allows us to finally know where we stand in regards to budgeting and future planning, how much we owe them. Um, we implemented a new pricing structure this past January, where customers can choose the speed they want, um, and significantly upped what we were offering. We added four new POPs this year, POP is just a tower, a location that customers connect to, again, to four new areas, um, two in the tunnel end, um, the East Gate subdivision we're working on right now, and then we expanded onto Tomahawk Trail in Farmington. And in the past year, our customer base has grown about eight, so, not a lot of growth, but we're holding steady a little bit of growth, which is a good sign. I'm looking forward to next year, in January, we make our final AT&amp;T settlement payment. We feel at some point in the first half of 2016, we'll be approaching AT&amp;T to get more bandwidth. First half of 2016, we'll probably be bringing in a new pricing structure for approval, um, we're gonna kinda structure it the same way as last time, we're gonna give our customers more speed for what they're paying, so we don't lose revenue, while also making our pricing more attractive to new customers. We're working on setting up a dedicated business class internet service, which would be separate from the, kinda separate from the system that all of our normal customers connect to, allowing our business customers of no, more direct connection, and then we'll be completing the broadband grant project and may consider applying for another grant, so that's kind of where we are, where we're going next year. When I put together the budget, I just took the past twelve months of customer data and just based averages off of that, uh, the customer counts, number of installations, et cetera, to get my numbers for next year, and I, on this budget, I've always tended to underestimate our income a little bit and overestimate the expenses since, you know, a lot can change depending upon different factors throughout the year. For 2016, you know, nothing majorly different for income, looking at about a hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred thousand dollars. For expenses, we've got that final payment to AT&amp;T, we're still working through the grant project, so we're spending a lot more on equipment than we normally would, and half of that gets reimbursed as part of that project. And then there's, uh, so our total expenses for next year are about a hundred and forty-eight thousand, but also includes that depreciation expense, so that's, you know, making that number bigger than it should be, so you subtract that twenty-one and a half thousand, and it's more in line with our revenues for next year. Um, once we get past this upgrade project, which we're, you know, investing a lot of money into the system, I think things will settle down, and I think it'll, now that AT&amp;T's taken care of, that grant project will be done, and I think it'll lead into a very nice 2017. I think the only major change on the budget is on the expenses, I just grouped a couple line items together, there were a couple different miscellaneous equipment and supply line items, and just grouped those into one, and that amount, like I said, is significantly higher than past years, just because we're working through the grant project and are spending more. Otherwise, I don't think there are any other significant changes on this budget at all. Questions, comments?
We specifically did not budget the twelve thousand dollars for AT&amp;T because the auditors, unbeknownst to you last year, had already booked a payable for it, so I had an expense to back in for the full amount of the, um, expense that, uh, that was, um, due AT&amp;T as a, um, expense already back in two thousand and thirteen. So, with the twelve thousand, um, left in, um, accounts, in that, in that reserve, in that account, um, to pay it, um, we were able to return back to the fund the, I think it was almost another twelve thousand?
Cause that's, yeah, because we, we settled on thirty-eight or something?
Yeah, and so you were able to return back that, those expenses into the fund, um, because you, for this year, to, um, help your, um, to help your bottom line, for the online.
So when you say that they booked it as a payable, were they decreasing the cash at that time, or?
No, not, because it was just a payable, it was just liability out there, for fifty-two thousand dollars, and, um, so they had to expense it back in thirteen, and so when you gene, when you did your fifteen budgets, you kept expensing that, thinking you had to expense it again, and you didn't, because you had already expensed and put this money aside.
Okay, but, if we look at the fund balance, somewhere along the line, you have to account for that in the fund balance.
Right, um, it is in there, uh, the other problem we had was there were, in two thousand and fourteen, we wrote off twenty thousand dollars with a bad accounts because they had been terminated but not, um, removed from the receivable, so we had, our receivable was overstated by twenty thousand dollars, so in fourteen, we, we wrote off, um, accounts that were, uh, five, six years old, that were out there, and, um, and took the hit, knowing that we had that agreement with AT&amp;T that it would, would smooth it within fifteens, but, um, financial statements.
So they offset each other.
Yeah, so I, I think, um, the fund is in a good position cash-wise, it's looking at about forty-seven thousand dollars in, in, in real cash, um, some of it is, it, you know, the receivables are down, they're only like, we're running about three thousand dollars a month for outstanding receivables, Tina's been keeping up on, on collections, so, I, I think it's a good fund, you know, it's, it's nice and solvent right now.
So that ending fund balance projected for two thousand and sixteen is a pretty good number, that fifty-seven? Even with paying off AT&amp;T?
Yeah.
Good, awesome. Thanks, Josh. Any other questions or comments on the, we'll pack on on the budget? Kathy, you had, uh, are we at that point, you, you gave us one other handout?
Yeah, I gave you an up-to-date, so if we put in, we, I gave you a one-page summary that shows, um.
It says summary on the third line, can you see that?
I just gave it.
Starts with mayor, council, so she just handed it out. Maybe no one's. Want me to show you what it looks like here, buddy? Is that it?
Looks like this.
You got it?
That's what I told you.
Looks like that? You got it? You got it? All right.
By adding in the request for the fire department, the historical society. The historical society and, um, the recycling fund, uh, we need to cut a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars out of this budget.
So it got pretty quiet in here. Well, there isn't any, um, I, I'm not sure how we're, we're gonna handle that number as we talk right now, I mean, I, again, this is a committee of the whole meeting, uh, so, I mean, it's council, or the department heads have obviously seen this, now, the bottom number, um, unless you have, uh, and we can certainly discuss this, um, what your thoughts are on, on what we need to do to reduce that, um, again, it's, it's gonna fall on the department heads to, um, to be able to figure out what to do here. Now, when you say, let, let's, let's, let us all fully understand what this means, if you're saying that we're, uh, need to cut a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, or what? I mean, does that mean?
Or we're pulling it from fund balance, because what it is, is it's, this is the levy that we have attributed to general operating, the general operating budget, so that gives, the tax levy's been increased by the nine thousand dollars that we can get from our net new construction, it's the extra, um, uh, nine thousand pulled from the airport that we're, you know, I moved some of the levy over, um, it's moving out the, um, library, but it's also moving, uh, the amount of what, uh, the library board's requesting, the four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in tax levy, um, but it's also moving out the building expenses for the city hall to the library fund, so it's, it, it's, it, it's all encompassing of all the requests for the departments and the revenues that, they're looking at generating, it does, don't think it's got Brennan's, uh, Brennan's increases, yeah, it does, yeah, it's got the increases in, um, building permits, if you adopted this, uh, new rates, um.
So, let me ask you this, Kathy, I know you're going through that, but, does this number have a tax increase, either in the mill rate or?
No, because you can't.
We have no, we have no room to increase.
We have no room. What you have in gen, in the general, in your summary that I gave you in revenues for the taxes, is it, unless you can raise a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in new revenue, um, move some other costs off to something else, uh, that's pretty much what you need to, to remove from that, that, um, from that budget that's been presented.
Kathy. This doesn't include the charge back to the TIPS, though, because there's no.
Yes, it does, it's in the revenues.
But there's no, my budget did not go up seventy-eight thousand dollars, I was at a flat budget.
When I go in, I take out your seventy-eight thousand dollars that you had for water and sewer and the TID, that's how much was offset, if you look at the old budget, it'll show, so that's what your increase is, so, but I also have an offsetting revenue of two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars that we have to the water and the TIDS, there's a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars to the TIDS that are.
So you're saying you're accounting for that revenue coming back in?
Yep, it's already accounted for.
Okay, so we're still short a hundred and seventy-five?
Still short a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
The only thing you're seeing on this summary that she gave are the expenditures. The only thing you're seeing on this summary that she gave are the expenditures. You're not seeing the revenue side of it. Yeah.
I just want to make sure, so...
Well, it's a great question.
But you can, but you can look at the, the revenue sheet that I gave you, the summary that, that was on the top of the general fund budget, that has all of the revenues. It's based on all those revenues being collected.
Yep.
And the amount that we can only go up legally under the levy limit.
I think the caveat, though, is as we refine this, it could go down, and it could go up a little bit, right? I mean, there's been a lot of numbers moving around, and I'm sure you're going to want to step back and look at it again, and probably all the department heads, and just make sure it's where it needs to be, but, yeah.
Steve, go ahead.
I noticed when I look through here, I don't see airport on TV, but...
The airport is a separate fund. This is just the general fund. So, if I, if I took the $9,000 levy for the airport, when we look at the total operating levy for the airport, the library, and the general fund, which is where all of our levies are attributed to, then that, that's what we can only increase. That's what's going to go on in the report to the state.
I think the other caveat, too, I'm not sure Kathy has an answer, like I said ago, but we're going to be looking at the TIF districts in total and kind of understanding the impact of all that, you know, vis a vis this, too. So, we got to understand that, too, right? We got to look at that. So, I don't know if there's, you know, is, is there a way we can mitigate this a little bit by how we're budgeting in the TID a little bit? And I don't know, we haven't worked far enough on that. We'll have our advisors to come in and work on that, but...
And I, I don't see how we totally ignore compensation for staff. What's the 1% raise, 40,000?
Well, it's, yeah, 30, 35, for the whole organization, and it's, it'd be less than that in general.
We've had bigger numbers than this before.
As a first start, we're always out of bail. There's always more requests, and this is the first kick at it.
Well, if this is the first kick at it, I don't disagree with Chief Goke. I think that a cost of living increase should be included in this. If we're not afraid of the 175 at this time, I think what we see should include a, some kind of pay increase, especially since they're getting hit with a additional charge in their health insurance, too. So, I, I think, Henry, you told me that the cost of living increase is pretty minimal this year, but...
Well, when we go in, well, yes, it's, it's...
You don't want to give it away yet, but...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I forgot where I came from. You're going to negotiations form. Yes, it's, it's, it's pretty small.
It's pretty minimal. But there, there needs to be something in there, and I would propose that we put 1% in there as, you know, and see where that puts us. I mean, this is a mixture of some increased expenditures and reduced revenues, no doubt that Henry told us about right at the beginning of the meeting. So, for the most part, most of the departments are at zero increase from where they were last year. So, we're actually talking cuts, if this is true. So, I, I don't know how much further you want to go tonight, because you don't have all of the numbers that you need to give us a true number, right? You don't...
No, and I would, I would like to be able to give you the numbers, especially with the assessed value, so you, you can see what the tax levy rate is for the city and, and across all of the funds. So, I'm going to put together the, the, across the fund summary that you normally see in the financial statements, where it, this is, this is the tax levy for the general fund, the library fund, the airport, the transit fund, and, and get you more of a broad, broad look at, at, at the budget, too. So, and then, then that way, you've got all of the details here, and we can keep, keep looking to see what else we can find. Like I said to you, this is from the financial advisors that we met, Brennan and I, on the TIFs. This is probably our worst year of 15, and the fact that we had a net new construction of only .26, which only gives us $9,000. And losing $40,000 in transportation aids, so...
Mayor, would it be safe to say, though, that this is the year to try to fund potential retirements? Because that could be 30, that'd be 30 out of my budget right now.
Well, I mean, that would be one of the first things that we would probably say we have no choice but to take that out of there. And if we do need to fund it, we would have to fund it with reserves, which has been past practice. When we necessarily had to fill that position, that's what we've done in the past. So, I would think, Chief, that would be something that should be offered up, and probably we should take that into consideration. Although, you take that 30 out, that probably covers the 1% pay increase. So, we're still at about 175, using the numbers that she has here. But thank you, Tim, for that.
So, may I ask, Mayor, what's the scenario then? Do you ask the departments to refine their budgets, or we wait, are we going to wait for more numbers? I, I don't know the process. You're going to try to eliminate 175 here?
Well, that's what I've been thinking of right now, Scott. So, that's a good segue into this. I, I think when we meet on the 28th, I would like to see, hopefully, that that 175,000 is zero. And I would hope that staff would be able to put that together for us. If not, we'll have to make the tougher decisions, and, and I'm not sure that you want us to do that.
Yeah, that was...
So, I would think that we give you the opportunity first to get there, and if you cannot get there, then we will have to be the people that make sure it gets to that place. We have no choice. This isn't, we're going to raise taxes, because we can't, any more than where we're at. So, we can't do that. So, we, you know, we have no choice here. Again, we don't know what that number is. It could be, it could be more, as Henry said, or it could be less, but we know it's going to be a number that needs to, that we need to do something with. And hopefully Kathy will be able to, to get that number broke down, so that we'll be able to, you know, soon, so that we'll be able to figure it out. Now, is that, with that said, what I just said, Henry and, and the rest of the department heads, is that something that you feel you need to do, or you can do, or do we need to plan another meeting like this?
I don't speak for, obviously, everyone, please pipe in, but I think if you give us the 15 days to the next meeting, we'll have a, a really good idea of what that number is, and we will meet in that interim and talk about it, once we can get, you know, get it all consolidated. Because there's, you know, Kathy's been, kind of had an undaunting task. She has a lot of, you know, a lot on her plate, and then this is, there's a lot of movement and stuff, and there's a lot going on here. And I appreciate her getting us to this point, but I think just to drop back a little bit, take a little breather, come back together and have this meeting, and, and then see where we're at. And then, to your point, if we can get there and bring you something that meets the task, we'll get there, and if we can't get to some consensus at our level, I mean, ultimately, you guys are the arbitrators, right? And, you know, we usually have a pretty good track record as a staff, but at some point, it gets to the point where people, we might not get there. I, I, you know, we've had more daunting tasks than this, I think, ultimately, to that point, we've, and we've been able to get through it. So, I, I guess I would like to try to talk about it at our level. But your expectation should be that we might not get all the way there. We can probably make some movement.
Can I try my perspective on some numbers here and see if there's a flaw here? If you're on the total expenditures, up to $500,000, and then our debt to $200,000 that we're short, to me, that comes out to a 1/25th, which is 4% for every line I have somebody to have to cut. That's a big number in some cases. Some, I don't know if you cut any, in some of these cases, you can't even cut them, I don't think, how you can. But that's what it's going to come to, if you're going to average it out to everybody cutting 400% out of that number here. I think...
Well, yeah, in my experience today, we have done that, but I think at some level, that is, is not...
I'm not saying it's practical.
Well, it's, it's, you're not making any priorities, because we're all around this table, we kind of have an order of what our priorities are here, right? And, and, you know, it, it, it might hit those priorities harder than, than you want.
If we had all come in at 0%, really, we'd still have to come up with another $100,000? Is that kind of...
We've lost revenues.
Yeah, we're down.
We've lost revenues.
Yeah.
All right, no, that could have...
You also, last year, you budgeted $75,000 for land sales. You don't have any land that you can sell for $75,000. Why would you budget for that kind of revenue?
So, that's, there is no land sales in here?
There is no land sales.
Well, in, in theory, that should go to TIF 3, because that's...
And we did.
TIF 3 or 8, yeah.
You know, TIF 3, we sold that land to Sunny Day, and that's where the revenue went, because that's where it's supposed to go. It doesn't offset the general fund.
And as you said, too, a couple things that you said that I think is very important for council to, to realize here. One, we can't, and we can't, we got to get this down to zero. That we have to do, whatever that number is. And two, we can't use reserves to do that, because our reserves are at about 20%, you said, Henry?
Yeah, 18 to 20.
And that's down.
Yeah.
That's down quite a bit.
$63,000.
Yeah.
Well, the, you know, maybe it's a madder degree, maybe if we need 25 grand to get us there.
Well, we're already talking 30 grand if, if whoever decides to retire next year is the police department. So, you know, I mean, so we're already talking about using reserves for that. And last, the police and fire commission decides not to hire that position at, you know, for, until it's paid up. And that's a possibility, too, but that's really up to them. So, I, I think that's a good, good plan. I think you get the numbers down, Kathy. You guys meet together as a, as a, as a team and see if we can't get this number figured out before we meet again on the 28th. I'm obviously available at any time if you guys want to bounce it off me. So, if that works for you.
Yeah, and I, please, Ryan, we want them to keep these sheets.
And we'll get colored ones for the updates.
Right. Yep.
Anything else?
If anything changes, you won't get, you won't get a colored sheet.
Anything else for the good of the meeting? Again, I think it's important, this is the first draft that we've had, the very first draft we have had, and this is probably the first time that, I'm sure it is, that the department heads have seen this, too. So, you know, the expectation should have been where they are, that there was going to be more requests than, than what we had available, and, and we just need to tweak that. So, you know, the press is in here, we have it on TV, I want to make sure that, that we're not doing anything that anybody else has had problems with, too. We have the same problems with our family budgets, too. So, we just have to, we have to get through this, and we have to figure it out. Anything else for the good of the meeting? We need a motion to adjourn, then.
No move.
Second. Hackett, what's that? Is that what they, yawn?
Sounds like you can hack it.
Motion by Hackett, second by Agen, that we adjourn our committee of the whole meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. We're adjourned at 9:47 PM. Thanks, everybody, for hanging in there, watching us on TV.
I'm sure, I'm sure they cut it over to the baseball neighbor's...
I'm sure ratings come down after you got the game.